Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us. This is the call to order the committee, the whole meeting for February fourteenth. Two thousand twenty-three. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Um. The answers you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Deletions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Melnick, thank you. All in favor? Or not opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, so we all, sorry, we also have the committee of the whole minutes in front of us for February seventh for information. There's no delegations and no correspondence. So it brings us to item seven point one. That's public transportation study and action plan. And I think we have Aaron too in the audience or at the table ready to present on course. Mr. You.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. Our consultant on this project, Aaron Toop, will help us out with making a presentation, but you do have a staff recommendation in front of you, and that's that council committee recommend council receive the transportation strategy and action plan for information and that committee direct administration to begin the next steps identified in the action plan. Specifically with focus on establishing a fixed route bus service beginning in two thousand twenty-three and conducting it by sharing from two thousand twenty-three. So we'll get into the details as Aaron goes through the presentation. But this is in alignment with both the Jasper community sustainability plan the two thousand eighteen transportation master plan, both of which recommended looking at public transportation options. And so we'll let Aaron make the presentation and then we can get into discussion that would arise. The other item of notes, I think, that we can cover after Aaron makes your presentation. So see if that's just getting organized on screen and I'll toss over to Aaron to make her own introductions.
It's green. Thanks, Bill. I was just trying to make eye contact with Emma to show that there's two slides on each of my pages for whoever is flipping pages. So thanks for having me this morning. I'm going to, I know you've seen the report already as well as the slide deck in the council agenda. So I'm going to aim to keep this presentation brief, knowing that you probably have some questions and a discussion will be worthwhile at the end. So our agenda for for this meeting is essentially an overview of of the whole project. I'll do a quick recap of what we presented in September when we provided an update at that time and then share what we've done since then. So this is a reminder of our our project process. That May date is incorrect. It should say August slash September apologies about that. But we we kicked off the project at the end of the summer and worked through stakeholder and public engagement through October and November of last year. And then we started developing and assessing public transportation options for Jasper kind of beginning in the wintertime. So in the research and context setting phase, this is the piece of work that we had brought forward to you last time that that I was here. So we completed several tasks in this first phase. I'm not going to rehash all of them, but a couple of pieces that I wanted to focus on were Jasper's goals for public transportation on the next slide. And these goals have been adapted a little bit since we were here last with council's feedback as well as some ongoing discussion we had with stakeholders and administration throughout the project. So again, in no particular order, you've seen goals one through four, which are really about reducing congestion and improving environmental sustainability. And then looking at quality of life and quality of experience for both residents and visitors respectively. We also added a couple of goals around making sure that we're not stepping on the toes of existing businesses, that this is really about integrating and complementing services that exist already. And in a sense where we had permission from the operator of those services that yes, they would like the municipality to to take on a service like that. And so really avoiding duplication in terms of working with stakeholders along the way. So we had looked at population and visitor demographics and and reviewed data, which I won't rehash now. But with stakeholder input, we were able to kind of take those demographics and then help really define who the target transit customers are that we were trying to serve through this study. So this slide shows kind of our potential transit customers, looking at really anyone who wants access to congested areas nearby the municipality or kind of those key tourist destinations. People who live in Jasper or surrounding area that might not have access to a personal automobile. And then thinking about the guests or visitors who arrive in Jasper, maybe without a vehicle who know need to get around or or could benefit from getting around. And then finally, a really big group that we wanted to clarify were students of the Jasper schools who live out at Fairmont, who are currently benefiting from the the school board's public bus pilot this year because the school board thought that there's a great opportunity to integrate bus pilot into a municipal transit system. So the second phase on that note was stakeholder and public engagement. And so this we reached out to a lot of folks through this phase, and I think learned a lot about the the transportation conditions in Jasper. With stakeholder workshops and stakeholder engagement, we kind of confirmed existing transportation services in Jasper. Identified services that could be integrated into a municipal system, those services that people said, yes, please, we'd like you to take them. We also talked with providers about their customer needs and then looked at kind of gaps and opportunities in the current transportation services. With the public survey, we reached out to about three hundred and seventy Jasper residents and around ninety visitors to Jasper. We asked them about feedback on the two thousand twenty-one pilot, which I think was valuable to get get a sense of how the community felt about the pilot. Their interest in using public transportation modes and which modes and their interest in accessing certain destinations around Jasper and which destinations were a priority. And then we used some of those preferences to to filter down modes in transportation destinations. Finally, we reached out to hotel operators through a hotel questionnaire. We asked them about their interest in supporting different transportation options at their locations and what priority destinations their guests or they might want to access via public transportation system. So a lot of support for sharing risk where there are common goals was a key theme that came out of the the jet stakeholder engagement. And so you'll see on this slide. The stakeholder names that are folded are the entities that came to a workshop and and we reached out to several times throughout the process. Everyone on this slide was invited to participate in the study, but not everyone elected to participate. Other key themes that we we learned through discussions with the stakeholders in a workshop is the key gap. It was transportation service in the winter and really thinking about the difference between winter and summer context in Jasper as well. We heard, I think, positive feedback on the pilot and an interest in investing over multiple years in a transportation solution to really build the momentum and make sure customers have a chance to adapt to the new system as well, a desire for Jasper to be seen as a leader in public transportation and environmental sustainability. So as I said, one of the big outcomes of the stakeholder engagement was an understanding of existing bus services, which I admit took a while to wrap my head around through this study because there's a lot that's being offered by by private organizations. And it was, I think, valuable for us to compile it all in one map and look at kind of what the popular destinations are. So we we did this through several follow-up meetings with individual stakeholders to obtain kind of their schedules or just a bit more detail about the different services that they offer. But you'll see a variety of services here that run in the fall and winter as well as year round, accessing Marmot Basin and then Alpine Traveler Route as well as the Fairmont School of Us Route. So from that list of existing services, we then focused on the primary candidate services for integration into a municipal system. And we found that the Fairmont staff and guest transportation primarily actually the staff transportation, because it's a bit more of that public transportation function where guest services could could be a bit more of a premium service. That they were interested in integrating as well as the school board school best service. Marmot Basin also is interested in integrating their service into the municipal system and would like to engage more on that throughout this year. We didn't include it in our bus service concept for this year as it's kind of a remote destination that would require additional resources to operate as well, because we understood that they had arrived at a temporary or interim solution for providing transportation services this winter. And need to work on kind of engaging with all the stakeholders involved in those services before getting into more detail. So next, we, I wanted to show you some of the feedback that we received on the two thousand twenty-one pilot. So we got some great feedback from the public and the majority was positive. And we considered the pilot project as a good foundation for for public transportation options going forward. Because of this, you'll note that the majority of residents didn't use the pilot. I think it was really valuable to understand why. And so some of that was, they were simply unaware of it. Some of it was they prefer to walk our cycle, which is great news from an environmental sustainability perspective. Some prefer to drive and some said the service didn't go where they needed to go. And so I think a key piece of that that we could, we could solve easily is that communication and awareness issue. And some of the refining where this service is going is what we aim to do through the study and and using public input. I think I'll I'll leave that there and move on to the next one. Thanks. So the information that we obtained through the public survey stakeholder engagement and hotel questionnaire allowed us to develop a filtering analysis for the many potential transportation modes and destinations that we were originally considering through this study. And so you'll see this table is is a lot to take in, but essentially what it's doing is re-articulating those goals one through four that we had shown earlier in the study and then trying to map out what we can measure about those goals and the data that we had obtained from the public and stakeholders. So that's, that's how we approached the filtering analysis. And then I'll just show you how the the outcome of the analysis. So this slide shows the transportation modes that we had considered from outset of the study, and we had done our own preliminary feasibility analysis of each mode, but they all, there was some potential for all of them. And so we really were able to draw on the public feedback and stakeholder feedback to to narrow down the most applicable modes. So what you'll see here is that the highest priority transportation modes for both residents, visitors and stakeholders were the fixed route fixed route bus and on-demand bus and then e-bike sharing and bike sharing were also some of the the higher priority transportation modes. So that allowed us to kind of focus in on developing transportation options including those modes of transportation. We did a similar exercise for the destinations that we had reviewed. So you'll see in the map kind of the the study area extents that we looked at. And then with that stakeholder and visitor feedback, we were able to filter based on public priority, visitor priority, public parking congestion at some of these destinations. And whether there was existing transportation service or the two thousand twenty-one pilot had served those destinations. So you'll see the on the left in the bullets is kind of the short list of destinations that we identified that were a high priority for coverage as well as I mentioned before, the issue with Marmot Basin being important, but TBD for two thousand twenty-three. So there were some other considerations that we identified to inform the options or recommendations in this study, and I I won't read through them on this slide, that these were essentially other kind of important inputs to defining in the transportation options or some of the supporting elements of the transportation options. And so based on our screening analysis, there are three different public transportation options that we included in the report. But because the options are still conceptual, we took the approach then of defining principles for the municipality to use as those options continue to be refined throughout this year and throughout the the horizon of this study. So I'll walk through the options quickly now. And the first, each of the following options are really intended to work together as part of a growing public transportation system. They're not intended to be exclusive. So starting with option one, this would really be kind of the highest priority and the foundation of Jasper's public transportation system. That was the fixed route best concept. And there's some bullets just identifying some of the reasons why that that concept is selected again. We this is conceptual, but we wanted to really look at some routing options that tried to capture what we heard from all of the stakeholders and make sure that we could essentially develop a a concept here that can be operated with with a bus or potentially to and just kind of look at the operability and make sure we can cover all of those destinations in in a single day of service and using some of the parameters that we heard from the public around the times of day that they would prioritize the service. So we have the summer set of routes and a winter set of routes. The big difference is that in the summer, the the service would go to Whistler Wobbity campgrounds. In the winter, it wouldn't. The summer has a a higher level of service. We need more hours throughout the day and the winter would have a slightly lower level of service. I think one of the big flags we had is the winter service needs to continue to be refined as you launch the summer service and and learn about kind of those ridership patterns, then you may want to adjust the winter level of service and as well kind of take in that feedback from stakeholder community as the first months of service are launched. So the next slide just simply shows you the service characteristics. We needed to build these out in order to provide a ballpark cost for for operating the transportation. So that's what some of these parameters are showing you and essentially more service per day in the summer and less service per day in the winter. So the option two, the the next kind of incremental step after fixed route bus system would be looking at the e-bike sharing or e-bike rental hub system. And I think this bill highlighted this in the staff report. But we identified some priority locations for e-bike sharing. Not all of these would need to be launched on on day one and potentially moving forward as a pilot for e-bikes is a a great solution. And then option three, we looked at is an on-demand local bus. We we thought that might be more applicable in the winter because of that high propensity of our residents to walk or bike in the summertime, whereas in winter, maybe a on-demand bus circulating around the municipality would be more useful for people that that want to trip around the municipality. This would also be contingent on seeing the results of how the system, the fixed route bus is working over the next couple of years. But we tentatively costed this in launching in two thousand twenty-four, winter twenty twenty-four, just to provide an example of what the cost of on-demand service would be. So I would say a a large part of our report was outlining some of the factors for success related to the Jasper transportation system. And I won't go through them all here, but those were, these are the big buckets of of issues to consider and the sort of supporting components for public transit. As Bill said in the report, we recommend launching service with a third-party operator just because of the knowing this is a timeliness issue. It's really hard to build up a whole municipal administration entity in the next three months. So it's often a lot more efficient and cost-effective to go with a third-party operator, especially when you're thinking about a condensed timeline. As well, I'll just note that there's some supporting infrastructure considerations that I think there's a active transportation plan that's happening right now that has some really good synergies with needing to potentially enhance the supporting active transportation network and some work to do with Parks Canada on integrating their trail system, especially if we're looking at e-bike service to and from Whistles and Wobbity. So there's lots of funding available right now for public transportation. Bill noted that in in the report that there's a a capital grant out right now. And so I think this, this is the right time for Jasper, especially thinking about electrifying transit fleet. There's a lot more funding available for electrification of public transportation systems. We also, I won't go through the operating budget as it was in the report, but this is a kind of a sample operating budget. There's a bunch of assumptions in the report that that feed into this budget, but we'll say that we did factor in a considerable amount of partner or supporter revenue. Knowing that there are a lot of services that are being operated in Jasper today and entities that are likely willing to have the municipality deliver those services, but sort of share the cost of those services. As a a final action, we circulated our final report to stakeholders and requested their feedback, and we got some some great feedback. So like I said, strong interest in having Marmot Basin considered as part of the winter public transportation service. There was some suggestions from both Parks and Pursuit to include Belling Canyon as a destination, and I think we'll just need to balance that or consider the issue of whose operating service there currently and making sure that no, no service is duplicated or toes are stepped on. A suggestion to increase the size of buses that we had recommended in the report to accommodate ridership growth. Caution regarding kind of cost and maintenance issues in Jasper, just knowing that things are a little bit more expensive to operate in Jasper because we're a remote location. And then Parks Canada had some flags on ensuring that the e-bike fleet is compatible with their guidelines about what types of bikes are allowed to operate on Parks Canada trails, and that's just essentially a pedal assist bike. And so I think needing to continue to follow up with these stakeholders as as the options are refined would be sort of a key takeaway from from this exercise. I won't talk through the next steps in detail because Bill had just outlined them in the recommendations. And so I'll close the presentation now and happy to support with questions.
Very well, yeah, thank you very much. Would you like to add anything at this point, Mr. Goodman?
No, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I wouldn't. I think if council has any questions for Aaron or myself, just on the the report or the recommendations, but as I said, administration sees a really good opportunity. I've seen the report, some some notice about a recent federal government program. So just on January twenty-third, which wasn't that long ago. In fact, we were all just supposed to get onto a bus to go to council planning session, received an email from the federal government, the same program that supported our transit planning grants, which enabled the study. They released the second round of capital fund. The first round was oversubscribed and and quickly helped the door. But they recapitized that program. And so there is money that's specifically focused on rural transit solutions. Jasper qualifies for that. And the program does provide a significant amount of funding that is not available to private sector operators or businesses. And that's why the municipality would have the interest in applying to start to build out our own fleet. That program and Aaron correct me if I'm wrong, is up to five million dollars for zero emission fleet solutions. And the the funding is pretty comprehensive in that it can enable us to do everything from the rolling sock, the buses to storage space for the buses to charging infrastructure to be able to charge them to signage and other types of improvements that need the sort of that support surrounding infrastructure. So administration sees a real priority in getting an application in because that fund again probably will no doubt be oversubscribed. And so we see that as one of the priority actions because these federal and provincial programs come and go, and they have been coming more often than not lately. But there's no guarantee that continues. So certainly we have an actual plan that was built using those federal dollars, I think, demonstrating that we're extending that and saying, okay, you support us in doing the planning. And now we'd like to request your support to implement the plan that was built with that federal federal financial support. So we see that as the one of the top priorities. The next, as Aaron said, is really focusing on those discussions with the stakeholders that identify that they had an interest in partnering with somebody. And so we're already reaching out to those interested stakeholders. Grant Yellhead, as an example, that helps us with private. He said, okay, so he said you're interested. Let's talk about what that actually means and see whether first we can get their support for that federal grant application for fleet. And then secondly, we'll have some detailed discussion about what sort of financial contribution that might be able to make in their service that is able to deliver. And again, we have a plan that can say this is the type of service that will be developed. So Deputy Mayor Wilson, I think with that, I'll be the counsel for any questions that might happen to myself or Aaron.
Great, thank you. Counselors questions, comments? Counselor Geller, empty.
Sorry, I have to wait a moment. Got to, that's my mic this morning. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Through you to Mr. Goodman or to Mr. Stoll. I'm I'm curious about the e-bike program. Would that be an upfront investment from the municipality in here? We stated that for two thousand twenty-three, you have partnerships with local transportation for for bus service routes and for the installation of the e-bikes in Whistler Campgrounds or up at Kermit Lake or hotels. Would that be an investment through the municipality or would that be through private partnerships too?
I think the the answer is it could be a mixture of both. We certainly would look to partners. There were partners that were interested in hosting those types of installations at their properties. And so we need to talk about what that posting might look like. There was a smaller amount that were interested in financially contributing those to e-bike sharing. But certainly for the pilot project, we would see the priority there is the campsites. And our real ability to reduce congestion in the town site is by getting those front country campers of their vehicles and and into the town site that outside of vehicles. So I think we would look at a a pilot project by definition, something very small to get started. And that likely would have some upfront capital laid by the municipality, but it's also something that we are looking at incorporating into our federal grant application. So if we want to extend that beyond a pilot project that we would see that better support for.
And may I just follow up? And I'm just curious what Parks Canada, do you think be interested in coming on as a partner as it involves their campaigns?
Yes, again, that's one of those partnerships that we want to go and have some discussions with. And Parks Canada was excited about the recommendations in the in the study. And they were consulted both at the start and at the conclusion of this. They noted that they are already ready, you know, planning to make some improvements on their connector trains. And so that would be that, these round of discussions. So, okay, so how interested are you and what kind of support can you offer? I imagine that the first bit would be dedication to space and resource in terms of allocating some space in the campgrounds and then making those improvements on their lands that we could make to enable those. So more to come on that. And that's the type of thing that administration wants, you know, after council receives this and gives this direction to start the next steps is all of those discussions with tourism Jasper, Parks Canada, private operators and Grant Yellhead to start to say, okay, so how can we build up the capacity for us to actually deliver the solutions that are proposed?
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Yeah, Counselor Walter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I I threw you to Aaron too. I was interested because I've heard lots in the community about the desire for bus transportation from either end of the town to Stone Mountain to our Kell Court, where families wish that there was a bus service to take their children to school. I wondered if there was any discussion about that or thought.
I think that that came up in that on-demand option that was really thinking about sort of the townsite coverage from from the survey data. I think it feeling was a little bit mixed on whether people would use public transit in the town site or would still prefer walking or cycling in the town site. So it didn't kind of through our analysis come out as as the top priority, or it had maybe a little bit more risk for for uptake than some of those other options where there was a clear service that already exists and is being used to those locations. But I think it was something that we did discuss a little bit and wanted to make sure the option is seated there so that you can kind of review those ridership patterns or continue to take in feedback from the community that if there is a strong desire for that, it could be added on.
Maybe just further to that, you know, I think the the recommendations in our report really focus on where there is identified critical mass. There there's enough, there appears to be enough demand and interest and existing service that that these routes make the most financial sense to start off with. And as Aaron said, the idea of the on-demand service to follow is something that you can really tailor to local demand a lot more. You'll also notice that the West End you know, has, you know, doesn't really have a lot of stops. That's based on the findings that we had with working with industry and, you know, and businesses. There was there was a very level of interest among the business community, and you can see that reflected here because we said And you can see that reflected here because we said, let's start to start with those people where we know there's existing service and where we know that there's a high level of interest. And that's reflected in the route options that are here. On-demand gives us that ability to adjust to more local concerns. And the, the main fixtures can adjust over time. All transit systems adjust their routing from time to time. We would have that ability to hear as well.
Counselor Hall. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm also curious about the Grand Yellowhead Public School Division bus. And in your engagement with them, what kind of partnership or what kind of? But I'm just looking at the, you know, summer routes compared to winter routes, summer, early May to mid-October, winter, obviously the other months. But in, with the, with the school, there's a break between seven forty-five and ten fifteen. But that's, so then essentially we only have the summer routes for two months, still really busy in September, October and May and June. Just, just curious of what, what they've been, what, what kind of conversation have you had with them?
That's a great question. There's a lot of detail in the spreadsheet around the, the design of those routes. And I think trying to sort of keep it succinct in the report, maybe it looks like we, we missed that the, the school bus service would not operate in July and August, but it is part of the summer schedule, knowing that the summer schedule was kind of made to October. So the discussion with the school board, I think, was, was really positive. They were one of the first organizations that put their hand up and said, we, we would love the municipality to operate this on our behalf and, and be a partner in this service. And so it was really just kind of trying to figure out then how to incorporate their, those two trips per day that they run into that summer schedule and the winter schedule. So there is sort of a summer schedule with and without the, the school best service to reflect the July and August.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, yeah, just to reinforce a point that Aaron made there, minus the body, because in the, in that table that's in the presentation, it doesn't come up. But that's, that summer service is May to October. And so it does count those times and it does run that seven forty-five time that will get students to school. And then that's seven forty-five time again, and you can see that that carries over into the winter schedule. So that is incorporated. And, you know, to be confirmed, but as Aaron said, I think the school board has an interest in basically saying we, they were previously paying funds directly to parents who are driving their children in. They tried it this year to say, okay, well, can we run a school bus route? You know, is there enough demand? It appears that there is. But I don't think that they would like to continue to be the deliverer of that service. They would be happy to transition that funding that they had previously given to parents and then committed to their pilot project. I think they're, they have a high level of interest in redirecting those funds to some other service that could be with the same names. And that's the timings that are built in the recommendations.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. And I know just with my, you know, being in community conversations and chatting with people. I think the struggle with the, the parents at the lodge had was that they couldn't drive their kids in. It wasn't enough to cover buses, to cover cabs. And so I think that's where the same, but it's very exciting that there is a partnership happening. Can I have one more question? I have another question. I'm following up a bit on Counselor Calhoun's question about e-bikes. I, I see, I, it's somewhere in the, the big report, but talking about trails. And I wonder that, because we have a lot of bike shops that rent bikes for trails and creating new trails, maybe bike path may be a more appropriate word. Just because I, I came to council probably twenty years ago too, against an e-bike sharing program. Because I had a mountain bike store at the time, but I just want to make sure that we're very careful with the wording. So I'm looking at these e-bikes and thinking of the Big C bikes from Montreal that we used to ride in, they would not be appropriate for trails at all. Maybe bike path might be a more appropriate. So I'll step on those toes of the, the mountain bike shop owners.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, as, as Aaron said, that was one of the principles that we added in this entire study. Because we appreciate that on sort of both sectors, you know, we have people that are operating transportation services, both bikes and vehicles. So we wanted to make sure that we were really cautious about that. And that's why this pilot project would be focused first on the, on the campsites. And, and we're talking about a, conceptually a hub and spoke model where the hub is the townsite and the spokes are the align areas. And so the goal would be to be bringing people in and allowing them to get into the townsite and then spend the time in the townsite and walking around. And then when they want to get back out, they have either the bus option to get back out or the bikes. They would not be the types of bikes that would be appropriate for trails, as you said, for trail riding. The report does have some details on recommendations for the, for the pathways or trails. And I think Parks has seen that and may already have some plans about some improvements they're going to make. I don't know what level, I don't have a great level of detail, but what they're planning to do, but they have seen this and that would be that stretch. Is how can we make that fit for the types of bikes that would allow people to come in? We don't, you know, we'll have to think through if we have bikes in the town site that would allow people to get up to the lakes, for example, or up to Pyramid. How that works. And so that's why the idea of a pilot project for twenty twenty-three is where we start. Let's, let's start to start and see how this goes, just like we did with, with transit itself. And then build our approach based on the outcomes that we see there. The other thing that's really important, and because we, we did take this to heart about the fact that we have great local businesses that have already invested in e-bikes in some cases. And we have great know-how in our bike shops. We see that there's an opportunity to partner with local businesses because the bikes will need maintenance. There are, are also, there may also be a need to have somebody that helps with sort of repositioning bikes, you know, so if we end up with all the bikes in the townsite and everybody decided that they had a great day of walking, they just want to take the bus home. And then none of the bikes get back out to the campsites, we may need somebody to reposition. So we see opportunities to partner with local businesses on the maintenance and redistribution of bicycles at the end of the day. And so that would be a key consideration again, and we'd like to test through the pilot project phase, so we can figure things out before going to a longer term, certain larger installation.
Yeah, I want to jump in there too, because actually I was waiting to jump in and ask something similar of that question. But the one thing that does kind of sway me back towards the pilot product or supporting the pilot project is the fact that there is funding available for electric fleet and, and, you know, a local bike, bike shop. It's going to be very challenging to get the amount of bikes on them out there that, that we may be able to do. And, but, but again, yeah, just definitely want to go back to that. Not stepping on businesses still isn't working with them is, you know, crucial for sure. Counselor Waxer.
Sorry, through you to, Miss Stup. I wondered if you could speak a little bit about the Lake Inet, Lake Edith, part of the run. I know that that area in the summertime is very important to families and to seniors. And I know that many seniors don't have a vehicle and the ability to have that paved walk around the lake and the ability to have a picnic. And for young families, picnics and, and beach time is important. And I think there's increasing numbers of young families and seniors who don't have a vehicle. So I wonder if you could provide a little bit of information on that.
Yes, I, so in, we had some good discussions with the operator of Sundog or the owner of Sundog about exactly how the pilot had accessed Lake Edith and Inet in twenty twenty-one. And he confirmed that the, the bus stop was actually on the, the Fairmont or the Lodge Road. And then people had to walk into Lake Edith and Inet, which it's, it's not ideal at this stage. But that's why the report contains a recommendation that the municipality can work with Parks on developing their plans to upgrade that access road so that it could be accessed by a transit bus. And so the stop could be located at the lakes or in the lake parking area. Unfortunately, right now, just the risk of going, like, as we all know, driving a bus in there in the summertime, it may ever come up. And so I think the, the sort of interim solution is that it, it, it will need to stop on the road until there's suitable access for a transit vehicle to get to the lakes. But that would be a, a very important implementation step.
Okay, I can just add that, you know, even before this study, in the discussion with Parks Canada, with the MOU, you know, they have a commitment in the MOU that council approved to looking at their infrastructure and theirs where they can make improvements to be able to support the delivery of this service. And this is one of the specific areas that they, you know, that I mean, everybody is aware of the challenge. And they are, as we've seen in the last couple of summers, doing their best to try to manage congestion of their activities, but they will change sometimes. And so they're well aware and certainly I won't make any commitments on that to Parks, but they've already suggested that they're, they're looking for better options. And we're interested to work with them to help define those options, piece the worst of all, for service for locals and for visitors. And just also for locals, one of the things that we've already considered and would consider in a federal grant is to ensure that any of our buses were equipped to be able to carry good bikes on them as well as other gear. So whatever is that possible, we'll make sure that words don't fly out the side of the bus as regarded down the highway. But we do want to see what options are available to ensure that if there's somebody that's in the townsite going up the lakes, to the joys and time out there, they can take some gear with them as well. And so that's also in the administration.
Counselor Goodwin. Counselor Goodwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Like the sound of that. I, I'm not really directing this towards anybody, just to comment and just to see if anybody's ever taken the collect D V O on the Mayan Riviera down in Mexico. It's a local transportation that they have down there. I don't know if you're familiar with that. And the answer more gears what we have in the, in our document here is like that picture of the Powell River man and what they use in Okentos. And I guess that could be a good starting point, but I was always really impressed at how, you know, the users, the local users embrace it and, and how well it's delivered. And it's used by, by visitors as well. So you just, you basically pay thirty-five to forty pesos and you just jump on these designated stops like you would normal bus stops. And it takes you to all these location points and there's different termination areas, you know, where the, the mass pickups and drop offs are. But I always found it very intriguing how well it's operated and they don't use the big vans. And you know, although probably could, just because I think most of the access points are along the major highway that goes up and down the coast. But just a very interesting concept to look at and they've been doing it for quite some time. So just an impressive model that I thought it raised your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to this to been possibly to, to Mr. Goodman. I have some specific questions. Perhaps some observations and I think a request, I can, if you go through in that order. Firstly, I, I started by saying thank you so much for one of the most thorough reports that I think that we have received on council. It really is wholesome. It was clearly a lot of work, but there's a lot of really useful information here. So I, I thank you for that. I had just a couple of questions moving forward, particularly with respect to phasing. So there's a chart and for those who are looking in this long document, I think it's, it's page twenty-five of the actual report. You've got a chart about what will happen in the various quarters of successive years. And looking forward, I wonder whether we have properly looked at the prerequisites that need to be established in order to give a project the best opportunity for success. So you recognize, for example, in the report, potentially. If I was in the chair, that would be a twenty dollar fine to charity, perhaps to Jasper food thing, but I'm just saying. You mentioned, for example, the possibility of, or the potential need for sidewalk upgrades and things like that. So, and, and also there is talk about where the hub should be, whether Patricia Street is the proper place. And those are, I think, really important questions. But how far down the road do we go before we solve those questions? And where in the phasing schedule have we given ourselves an opportunity to resolve those questions in advance of proceeding with the more technical aspects of getting some sort of transportation. But so I'm just inviting a look again at that phasing document to look at whether we've got all of the prerequisites in, in place. And secondly, whether we have the capacity. So I was struck, for example, by the Cochrane example that, that you referenced. It was a little bit different because as I understand, that's an on-demand service. But they credit the success of that service to the communications rollout, which pre-existed the implementation by a year. We, in the, in the phasing document that you provided, looked like we expect the communication plan to roll out in the first two quarters of this year and be equal to the launch date, which I, maybe that's optimistic. Because our, our staff is already tasked with lots of other communications issues. And can they reasonably develop a communication plan that prepares the launch for every success possible? So I, I would just like to, not you, I mean, your report is excellent, but these are questions I, I raise with, with council. I don't expect you to answer them, but they come to me through the report. So I, I leave that as, as observations. On page nine of your report, you reference the environmental impact that this could have and reference in particular on a, on a bit of a chart on that page. The benefit of zero emission vehicles, which I accept, that would be a great way to go. But it seems to me that what was missing potentially is the value of offsets. So if we're going to measure the environmental success, seems to me there must be a measurable benefit in offsetting a whole bunch of private vehicles. I, you know, I, I think we can augment the reasons to support this by looking at, at that. And finally, again, appreciating the fulsome-ness of the report, in particular, all of the survey comments, and they were extensive, which means it was, was well read and people thought about it. And just as in the side, anybody watching is ever interested in running for council. One of the things they might do is take a position on public transit in their mind and then read this, these comments. Because they are all over the place. It, it just shows how difficult this issue is to deal with in the public. There is one comment and it's, I think it's on page nineteen slash fifty-five, that's all the responses. I, I just use it as an example. It doesn't really matter what it is, but it, it is a comment if I can pull it up. This is, I find it hard to move around a bit in this document, but the comment essentially is that this is for tourists and seasonal workers, not for residents. And it is not alone. There are many comments of that nature, which I find particularly difficult to imply that seasonal workers are not residents. They are maybe short-term residents, but they are residents and they count. But I do note that on page two of your report, it also makes that distinction. And so I just caution that as we move forward, we think about our duty to inclusion and to include seasonal residents as residents, because it sets up a raft of comments in the comment section that suggests that seasonal employees are either less than or not the same as in some respect, residents. And yet we need seasonal workers and they are residents for the time that they are here. And that's what drives this community. So I, I just. This community. So I I just I make that observation. And finally. There is one comment in particular and I I won't. Give it any favors by identifying it, but I can identify it if need be. Which I find to be. Bordering on spamatory and at a minimum. So objectionable that I think we should not give it a platform at all. And so prior to. Accepting the report for information and subsequent matters. My question that I finally got to is whether you might be prepared to redact at least that one. Comment. I I can live with all the negativity in there and I that's the role of council to to hear both sides. But when there is a comment that targets a particular business and a particular counselor, I I find that. So objectionable that it should not become part of our record. And at the same time, I I recognize that these are anonymous. And yet for the business survey, the hotel survey, it is anything but anonymous. And I wonder whether there is a need for that or whether the names of the responding hotels could also be read out. Because I think it's it's unfair to subject. At least potentially unfair to subject the hotels to identification and not individuals. Who can hide behind that that cloak of anonymity. And so I I wonder on on those two points, whether you would be amenable to a slight reduction to. To eliminate just one of the comments in one of the surveys and I can identify that for you and whether. If council is receptive, removing the names of the hotels. But leave all the rest of that important information would be acceptable to you before we get to a question of. Voting on. Accepting the report as information.
Thank you for that, Mr. Givney.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, just to speak to the mayor's concern, certainly appreciate that administration wanted to ensure that council. Had the full information available. So what you're speaking to is the appendices to the report. It's not actually a part of the action plan or the strategy. This is the information that informed it and we wanted to ensure that council members had full access to that. So administration is not actually asking you to adopt or accept any of those comments or any of those appendices. But they're there to ensure that council members, because you couldn't be at every workshop. You couldn't hear all of those questions or comments firsthand, but we felt that you may wish to hear what the public, what the inputs were that helped develop the plan. So the inputs are not the plan and administration wouldn't ask you to accept any of those inputs at our document. What we're asking you to do is accept the strategy document and the action plan that arises from it. That the appendices are merely provided to council for background information. So you can see the inputs that our consulting team and administration were working with. So appreciate the the concern because we would not want to have council. Either disclosing private information or or sort of be seeming to be giving approval or sanctioning a comment that is offside or inappropriate. But as I said, you will note that those are appendices to the report and not the reported recommendations itself. So I I hope that that was satisfy your concern, your mission.
Well, I do appreciate those comments. Thank you, Mr. Givney. My concern is this, and I appreciate that it is a bit of a technical approach, but that's. In my nature, but I downloaded the report that I read from the internet. So I know that this information is publicly available. And I can't draw that back, but I want to make it absolutely clear that if I accept. The report, I am not accepting those portions of it. And it's it it might be difficult for a member of the public to understand that nuance, but it's out there now. And it is our platform. And it has, I think, been improperly leveraged to give somebody a voice on our platform that should not be there. So I I I get that when we approve it. Assuming that we accept the the report for information. I simply want to go on record as saying there are portions that I do not accept and I do not think should be part of the public record. And if that's understood, I can I can live with that and if council understands that, but. And it's, I mean, it's a massive documents. You can't catch everyone in there and I appreciate that and I and I don't expect that. But we do have a a formal. Adoption process and there are things that I think should not be part of our record. So. That is if I thank you for the report. It really is excellent.
Yeah, Councilor Malik.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I I do want to take a look at the. What I I see is the proposed summer and winter routes. I see that in the summer route. We have no inclusion. To have service up to the tramway. And in the winter route, we have no inclusion to have service up to Marmot. And I think that those two are significant. Attraction points with significant traffic and I just need to understand the rationale as to why in this initial. Island project, those two are are not included. And not to diminish the route up the pyramid and Patricia. But by comparison, I don't know if there's the same volume of on that northern route as opposed to the attractions going south.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe I'll start and then ask Aaron to speak to the volumes. Because we did have good data from Tourism Jasper that sort of indicated where the primary areas of interest were for visitors and locals. Maybe you're interested in that, but into the exclusion of the Sky Tram and and Marmot. As they're in reference, one of the principles was to not intrude where there's already private service being delivered. And we understood that the Sky Tram is already contracting service for the provider. They were generally happy with that arrangement. On the Marmot side, our initial understanding was that they had come to an arrangement and had a contracted service. When we forwarded the final report to them, I said, well, wait a minute. In essence, the wait minute actually would be very interesting and this is intended to be a temporary solution. So there's more discussion to happen with Marmot. And we see that as an ability to, you know, that that would be something that we would need to think carefully about. Because there were different type of equipment that do that to load. And so administration is eager to have those conversations of council. It's sort of this plan. Say, what does that service revision look like in the future? And so we can plan on plan for it. But the initial indication was that both Marmot and Sky Tram had privately provided service they were satisfied with. And the final review of the plan, Marmot came back and said, well, actually would be more interested than you might have thought in integrating our services. So it translates into session administration will happen. Aaron, I don't know if you want to speak to the inclusion of Pyramid Lake and what you found in the data about visitor interest in that.
Thanks. I think it's a good question. It is a flag that came up from one of the stakeholders in reviewing the final report as well. It's just wanting to make sure the demand is there up up to Pyramid and Patricia Lake. But what we founded this on is data from Tourism Jasper, which I had presented in the September meeting. It was a little bit confusing. It was kind of a ranking of destinations in the summer and the winter by. The data set is kind of how many cellphone pings that that are received at those destinations. And it was surprising to me that Pyramid and Patricia were actually in the top two or three most popular destinations for. But you know, having the most activity in both the summer and the winter as well. One of the hotel operators that operates at Pyramid and Patricia was one of the locations that was interested in receiving public transit service. And potentially hosting bike share service. So that's another reason that we wanted to include the destination. As to what level of service that destination should receive. I I think the the service evolution program that we talked about in the report that says, collect data. Kind of a collect data and refinement of service cycle. That would be very important for any destination. But I think that's when if there's there are questions on it and really making sure you're evaluating it and. Absolutely refunding it as you go.
Great. Thank you for that. I guess that might lead to my next question, which is. In the comments that were in the survey by residents and. Residents who are long term and or seasonal staff. There's no indication of any sort of residential loop into the downtown core. And I imagine that would be an evolution towards that end on demand service. Without infringing on other services that are being offered such as a local taxi service.
Yes. I'll just maybe I can clarify that the timing of this public survey occurred before we developed those conceptual options. So the input we were providing people with different modes of transportation and different destinations, but not necessarily that exact routing. And so it really the survey results led us to drafting that routing, drafting the bike share option, drafting the on demand option, if that's helpful. So people in the survey didn't necessarily see an option to have a townsite loop. We simply asked them what their most preferred destinations were and modes of transportation.
Thank you for the additional information.
Counselors, anything more? Counselor Gomona?
Yeah, just not to have final words or anything, but just to echo what the mayor has already said. And this is probably one of the best documents I've seen in front of me my whole time on council. So just the thoroughness of everything and the quality of the details is fantastic and very helpful to help make informed decisions. Sorry, I lost my voice there. So thank you very much.
Hey, Counselors, if there's no more questions, we'd be entertaining a motion.
I would move that committee recommend council receive the transportation study and action plan excluding the appendices. Or information. And that committee direct administration began the next steps identified in the action plan with focus on. Establishing a fixed route bus service program in twenty twenty three. And conducting any bike sharing private program in twenty twenty three.
Thank you for that. Counselors, any comments? If there are none, I'll call a question. I'll in favor. And there are none opposed that a motion carries. Mrs. Stute, thank you very much for the the report and thanks for coming and hope to see you again soon. Right, I should carry on here. Okay, we're moving on to. Agenda item seven point two and that's Activity Center renovation project update. And we have Christopher Reed here to take us for that one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson and through to council. So the first item I have for you today is indeed the Activity Center renovation progress update. The recommendation is that committee received in December twenty twenty two Activity Center renovation progress update for information. There are alternative, whether is an alternative that committee would direct administration to return to a future meeting with any additional details. Without going too deep into the background, this is a longstanding project that council is well aware of. The latest update in the background, of course, is that in July twenty twenty two, council did award the construction management services contract to Carlson Construction. And so the latest information you have in front of you has Carlson now engaged fully on board. And the information is is, I guess, to a better level of detail, thanks to their inclusion now on the project. The discussion, of course, administration is committed to ensuring council and community are provided with regular updates about this progress. And so the attached summary provides an overview of recently completed actions and items currently underway in a long range forecast. The following milestones are scheduled for this quarter of twenty twenty three. The approval to award sub trade tenders for tender package one, tender package two is issued for tender documents. Approval to award sub trade tenders and construction start date is currently scheduled in May of twenty twenty three. I'll just pause there. I said, May of twenty twenty three. The chart below shows the major impacts or the major areas and their proposed closure or partial closure dates. And you'll notice the old ice plant demolition is the first item. Wanted to remind council that that project is well underway. And in fact, will be wrapping up at the end of April. But that ice plant demolition will be the first, I suppose, major indicator, because that will be in the entry plaza, right? So there'll be partial closure of the entry plaza next to the wildflowers. And then the large area arena addition worksite that hoarding will continue on for that large foundation to be poured in that that new build. The elevation room, which is the room in the basement where the elevator will live on that level. Which is actually currently where the Library of Things is housed. Then below that, you'll see the Activity Center entry and yard full closure area. And so to be very specific, the Activity Center entry is the main entrance or the west entrance between the arena. And the Wildflowers Child Care or the Arena and the Aquatic Fitness Center. So that's our what's going to become our main entry plaza. And to get the drainage work done, it's going to need a full closure. And so that's a fairly major impact. Under that, you'll see the arena full closure during the summer and that's to facilitate obviously the addition getting added on. The Activity Center lobby will have partial closure while the elevator is installed and that's through the summer again. The curling lounge will be fully modified again for the elevator, but also to bring that up up to date. And that will close up until October, when the curling season will begin. And then the aquatic center will have a regular, we would have normally had a fall shutdown. It will now be for three months though. And that will be for the demolition of all the change rooms and the building of half of the change rooms. And so we will reopen under limited capacity with half the change rooms open. And then that last large closure is the existing arena dressing rooms will be closed once the new ones are able to be used. And so there'll be some renovations going on in there during the season. But you'll notice that there's no sort of arena closure during ice season. There's no multipurpose hall closure and I would, you know, take this moment to thank our consultants for their hard work in creating a schedule that they believe is reasonable. It. It we would, you know, the proof will be as the tenders come in and the work gets actually booked. But there's, you know, decades, if not hundreds of years of actual experience on this team. And they are working with, you know, a a very good base of knowledge. So we have a level of confidence that allows me to present this to you today. Strategic relevance, of course, this project is connected to many aspects of council strategic priorities. Heavily weighted under community health relationships and then, of course, organizational excellence. The municipal inclusion assessment tool was applied to this RFD. And the project itself is heavily weighted to creating more inclusivity in our spaces. So all of the new dressing rooms, changing, they'll all be fully inclusive accessible spaces. So it's a great project for inclusivity. And the project is currently within the approved budget. And then there's this great status report from our consultants WSP in in collaboration with GEC and Carlson. To create this update and I'm available for any questions at council later.
Thank you for that. Counselors. Questions? Counselor Gomona?
I like the frequent use of demolition. But as far as the existing cooling plant is concerned, are we really demolishing it? Or are we repurposing it or dismantling and? And is it, are we going for a complete? Change in that area?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Demota. So the ice plant project is an ice plant replacement project. So the new building that's on the northwest corner of our site there by the arena. That's a complete new build of all of the components for making ice for both the arena and the curling ice. So when we say demolition, the existing ice plant, which is right across the street, across the walkway. From the Wildflowers Childcare Center, right at our main entrance. That that room will be gutted. So all of the bits in there are at end of life and there really isn't anything in there we're salvaging. The whole new plant is brand new. That room will. The whole new plant is brand new. That room will be gutted, emptied, all of the bits and bobs taken out, anything that can be salvaged, we will salvage, but. Only to places that might need them. Um, but it's not part of the project. That's demo it to be demolished. And then that room will become part of the new uh dressing room setup that we have. There'll be that main use of that space is to be the um uh what we might call drop in skate change area. So it'll be a place that we currently don't have right now. So a lot of uh school groups, for example, they'll get changed on the bleachers. Uh, and so this will be a much better setup, um and it'll give us flexibility in the future for other options.
That's great information. I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Other uh other questions, counselors? Marana?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Director Reed. I'm just looking at the the final chart, color coded chart. And in particular, the. Orange or yellowish ones that require attention and I. I'd like to hear more about um the development permit application. I I would have thought that the application would be in, so I I. Would appreciate an explanation of why that requires attention. I can understand that. Perhaps we haven't received the development permit approval, but if we haven't, um. How are we proceeding with the work that's underway without a development permit having been issued from you to dressings?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, through to your worship and and council. So absolutely, this chart was made uh basically at the end of Q four, so at the end of December. So um it is certainly reasonable that in the last month, we did address the January and the February items in that uh. Uh, golded out or or requires attention. The the attention was required because there are some things that as the development permit drawing set made things real for us. We could then see, oh, this tweak here, this tweak there. And so uh certain things like even specifying which kind of lockers we wanted had to be in certain sets of drawings. Uh, and so it was, it was more that there were a pile of questions that had to be answered, and we have been working hard to answer those questions. Um, so I am definitely not concerned that they said required attention. I know that we have given them attention. And the development permit was submitted back in December. So the initial development permit submission, we've been working with parks on these tweaks as we see them.
So the 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 application has been submitted, but no development permit issued yet?
Uh, that's correct.
Counselor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I think I'm going to refer to that same chart initially here, and I see a comment at the very bottom. Regarding the project team has been able to work to accelerate the schedule. And there's been an improvement in the overall schedule of five months from completion, I believe, of June twenty twenty four to January twenty twenty four. As you mentioned, this chart was prepared a number of months ago. Is that comment still relevant? Or is there an improvement on that comment as well?
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick and Council. The uh that comment is still accurate um and reflects, again, the addition of more expertise and more experience. And working with the project team to meet our residents' needs, so that we aren't, say, closing the arena or or during a nice scheduled time. Um, so this is um you using a variety of metrics that we in. One of the metrics is the sooner we get it done, the less it will cost. And so we're aiming all the time, maybe to be most efficient a- across the whole project team. So yes, it's still accurate.
And then if I might also refer back to the throw chart. And the closure of the activity center entryway, and you mentioned the ability to still access the.
Wildflower.
Wildflower. Wildflower, there we go. Self censoring. Um, I just want to understand what changes are going to be. In the parking on the street in front of the activities or aquatic center and perhaps across the street. To accommodate the loss of the access uh by the arena where people typically are using to. Um, pick up and drop off their children. Are we contemplating temporary signage and changes to fifteen minute parking as such? Also recognizing we're losing the parking lot across the street for a drop down area.
Um Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick, uh a very astute comment, and there will be dramatic changes for especially wildflowers, but not just wildflowers. So um even if you say had a booking at the multipurpose hall, there will be times you're going to go in through the fire exit. Because that's the kind of flexibility we have to show to allow that elevator to get in. Um, and so wildflowers, there will be times where uh one of the plans. Just speaking of self censoring, one of the plans we're working on right now is exactly how to get the childcare group, the the children and the adults through. And it, the most likely plan right now is they'll be going through the curling ring. Through the coloring ring to the gymnastics area and through into a new hole in the wall that doesn't exist yet into wildflowers. So yes, you're absolutely right. And so that means that all of the sort of fifteen minute parking we have now in front of the pool. Uh, Fitness and Aquatic Center is not really functional for that whole period. And so, yes, do we need to put different fifteen minute parking? Do we need to look at how staff park perhaps? Yes, all of those are on the table.
Great, thank you for that.
Counselor, um.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm just looking for some clarification. I'm looking at your blue charts. The arena will be fully closed. May to August, so backup for hockey season. Then the arena existing rooms renovation work, that's next January to me, so. I know you may have mentioned like not full capacity, but what what sort of capacity or what sort of, what does that look like?
So excellent question. Sorry Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, another excellent question. Um, the, if you think of the arena right now, that's how the arena will operate. With the exception of lobby changes and entryway changes, but the change room setup or the dressing rooms that we have now are is exactly how that arena will open for September, October of twenty twenty three. Uh, that arena will operate as it's always operated while construction happens on the outside. When that construction is complete and those dressing rooms are commissioned and ready to to operate. We will, in essence, have everybody start walking through the new hallway, which is being added. And they will walk either directly on the ice from close that close corner gate, or they'll walk the long way to the normal gate. Um, but the the existing dressing rooms will be completely blocked off, hoarded off, while they are demolished and then refurbished.
Thank you for that. Where will people, where will players change or is there a plan? You're saying there'll be no dressing rooms for that time? No, okay.
So we will, we will operate as we do today, and once the new dressing rooms are built. We will switch over to using the new dressing rooms. So for this next year, we will never have full, all these new dressing rooms plus modified dressing rooms. That will not occur, that full usage will not occur till the twenty twenty four, twenty five season. But twenty three, twenty four s- season uh will be, there'll be enough change rooms to do exactly what we've always done for the whole time. And this closure uh will be the most dramatic thing that people will see will be that changes to the exiting. So we will, we will come up to existing fire code.
Counselor, let me.
Question, I thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Director Reed. And so when the ice plant starts up, we have the original ice plant kind of like for a month or so to make sure everything goes ahead. Are you confident that once we switch, we're good?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Keller and the other great question. So the the there, we will not save the old bit as a backup for next season. We will be running on that new ice plant, and the new ice plant being finished in April means we have enough time to run all our cycles, to test it all out. Um, when we don't have ice in, uh we don't, we, you know, we will test it all out before uh the next ice season is built. And then the next ice season will actually be the sort of first new ice, but but the system will be fully commissioned and tested already.
Counselor Melnick?
Sorry, thank you through Deputy Mayor Wilson to Mr. Reed and um always like to look at numbers and. I see budget is the number fourteen million and change, and I see that the next number at the bottom. Forecast variance at completion to be under hundred and sixty six, hundred and sixty seven thousand. Um, I, that reflects the current savings based on what's been done so far, as well as what's been tendered. Probably in the first two packages, um or is that just um. Uh, where we are based on efficiencies and uh perhaps costs coming lower so far in the project.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh again, so I would take that number with a gigantic grain of salt, as big a grain of salt as he can swallow. Uh, because uh we haven't received any of the tenders, the packages yet. So really, the the true test of this will be uh when that tender package one and tender package two are received. Uh, by our construction manager, uh assessed by administration, construction manager. Um, so uh this is a forecast based on essentially quantities at the development, design development stage that this project was at back in December. Uh, so uh. I will wait and see. I will say that administration is committed and the project team, uh this is a, this is a total project budget of fourteen million dollars. There is an understanding that uh, you know, if there are really significant deviations uh based on the tender package, we may have to have different types of discussions. On what that would look like. Um, but uh the entire team from the designers to the construction manager are committed to that total project budget. So um I think the next one of these reports will more accurately reflect what the cost of construction will be, because we will have received. Uh, those tender packages in, we'll see what the market is telling us in terms of the actual costs.
Thank you.
I I'm going to jump in there. I I think also with the grain of salt, we have to take uh and or sorry, take with a grain of salt as the um. Schedule that's in front of us now. Um, and I do have to voice, you know, somewhat disappointment uh for me, because I think when this was a project was first brought to us. There were some assurances about closures and and mitigating them as best as possible. Uh, but we have a three month closure for the aquatic center, and that was kind of. Not discussed as well as with the grain of salt, you know, that that closure could extend that into six, you know, like three months could turn into six very easily. Um, so I I am of the opinion that we should have looked into maybe temporarily temporary uh dressing rooms for the aquatic room. Like say other location or uh echo trailer, uh because I could see that aquatic center being closed for half a year. Uh, I know that you're trying to mitigate the fact that that won't be the case, but if it's three months and then the other change rooms, another four months. Um, it's exactly what I was concerned about after COVID and after all the closures that we went through. And then again, our pool is going to be closed for what I see at least a half a year, but um. Unfortunately, I, that's right, I, a great, I'm excited about the project. I'm disappointed that we didn't look uh for other ways to keep our pool open um in the meantime.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and I will add that um. Well, I'll, I will say we did. Um, there is a bunch of mechanical work that precludes, even if we did have uh echo trailers. We're still going to need to close that mechanical system down to do a bunch of that mechanical work, new air handling units, um some, a whole bunch of electrical wiring and changes. So the project requires a pretty major like mechanical plant shutdown. It's not just the changers. And so um presenting this to you today is because we've been, one of the gold bits was we had to fight over the schedule. And when I say fight, we fought together to find the best path forward. And that took, you know, back and forth. Well, what about this impact? Could we do this? Could we do that? And so uh part of the the, you know, the needed attention part was us fighting over how to make this the best um blend of efficiency and effectiveness. And the, I'm presenting it to you today because I think we did a darn good job. I think you're you're right to be concerned, and I don't like a three month shutdown either. Um, but I I'm standing here saying I don't see any other way, and neither does the whole team.
Well, I appreciate that, but I hope we don't uh come November, say, oh, you know, it's another three months. So I I am going to hold you to the three month. I think like, you know, we're, you know, like, let's, let's stick to that or or look into other options to. To keep our services open uh after so many closures in the short uh uh near past. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, it appears I'm speaking a little more today than normal, but you prompted a question for me that aquatic center closure. Um, will that closure include um repainting of the pool and refurbishing um uh of the slide area? Uh, while we have an opportunity where we won't be operating it as a pool to um, you know, get another coat of paint in there and to do any repairs that are necessary. As well as any changes in lighting in the in the facility, because of course it is. If you're doing anything up there, it's a lot easier to do it when there's nothing in the pool.
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick, absolutely. That is uh one of the things we're doing during the proposed uh renovations is our regular maintenance shutdown. And uh anything we could sort of pile on, if you will, yes, if we're going to be shut down that long, we're going to maximize it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So maybe some fresh tiles.
Three.
Three. Grab it, we'll go back to grab it. Uh, Counselors, uh Counselor D'Ona?
Yeah, you know what? I I appreciate the the line of questioning uh Deputy Mayor. Can I call you like Danny Worship?
I'm just carrying on.
No, I just uh, you know, I I think to go through uh some short term pain to get some like long term quality out of that building. I mean, it's it's an old facility. There's a lot of stuff to get done, so I understand your concern and um, you know, if it ends up going longer, I know that's gonna. Um, affect a lot of people in the community, but if it doesn't, you know, that's a good thing, and and I'm all for supporting it, even if it takes that amount of time like to get it right. Thank you.
Maran?
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Wilson. If I might, there was an awful lot of salt added to the diet here recently, so I I thought I would offer some spice. And Director Reed, if you haven't yet done so, I invite you to read um. Comment number one, seven, one on page one sixty two of our agenda. Where in relation to. Transportation or transit services, um which the writer. Didn't really favor. They did make an interesting comment about recreation. And that being, how about spending money on an updated recreation center for people actually have options to be part of a community? Sadly, the comment is anonymous, so you can't respond and say, you know that. Um, there's fourteen million dollars here to help build community. Um, but it is, it's an important recognition, and I. I appreciate that there are challenges, um closures to existing facilities, we have one of those. But long term, I appreciate this incredibly supportive um. Capital project to boost community in so many ways. Uh, so i- if you can just help keep the word circulating through your department that this is for the benefit of community. Um, and that would be appreciated, and apparently there are people in the community who don't know that we're spending fourteen million dollars on an updated. Recreation center, but we know that. It's a major project. I thank you for the input.
Counselors, anything greater? I would entertain the motion. Counselor, I'm sorry, Hall.
I will make that motion. I too am very excited about this project. Um, I that can even receive we December twenty twenty two activity center renovation progress update for information.
Thank you, counselors. Any questions, comments? I'll call a question, all in favor? There are none opposed, motion carries. Okay, so uh item seven point three, we're going back to Mr. Reed uh for community conversations policy A zero zero five review.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and through to all of council. So the item before you is comm- community conversations policy A uh one, zero, five. We've been renumbering the ones as we go, so it will become a one, zero, five. And the recommendation is that committee recommend council adopt the revised community conversations policy as attached, and then with a discussion below. The alternatives, of course, committee could direct administration to revise community conversations policy with proposed amendments. Discuss today and return to a future committee of the whole meeting. So back in September of twenty twenty-one, council approved the community conversations policy, which outlines outlines council's commitment to meaningful resident engagement. To ensure that municipal services and programs remain responsive to changing community needs. Administration implemented the community conversations policy over the course of twenty twenty-two. And this policy brought focus to new areas that were added. And as an unintended impact, the new areas in effect diluted the very successful model focused on life stages. On October twenty-fifth, committee directed administration perform a review of this policy and report back. On December thirteenth, administration presented a review of the policy and committee directed administration at that time to return. To future committee of the whole meeting with the following amendments. Define with more clarity the role of council and staff, remove recreation, including area focus for economic prosperity. Now, in the discussion with feedback from council, administration revised this policy to refocus community conversations back to the fundamental success. Represented in the life stage conversations. Administration also noted that issues related to economic well-being, arts and culture, recreation and environmental concerns do tend to come up in the context of the life stage conversations. And there are a number of existing platforms for conversations about economic issues that the municipality is represented in, including. Jasper Partnership Initiative, Chamber of Commerce, Chambers Successful N E P M A events, Council's participation in community futures and work with Tourism Jasper in the development of a tourism master plan. Therefore, the attached policy draft has removed the conversation themes that were added in twenty twenty-two. And it does not include the economy as previously requested by council. The review of policy A zero zero four, public engagement also will provide council an additional opportunity, consider ways to engage the public in those matters. Community conversations participants were surveyed in June and again in December on format, frequency, time of day and recording. Uh, twenty surveys in June, another nineteen in December, and the input from the surveys helped inform the proposed amendments to the policy that you see before you. Um, sixty-three of the respondents prefer in person with the option to zoom. Forty-two prefer in person only. Sixty-eight percent of respondents like monthly thirty-two would prefer every two months. Hundred percent of respondents agreed that the conversation format works well. And ninety-four percent of respondents agreed that the system can manage the flow of feedback to council is working well. One participant further emphasized emphasized the value of having counselors present at the conversation. In response to the motion by committee. On October twenty-fifth and the subsequent motion by committee on December thirteenth, plus the input from council at strategic priorities retreat, administration is proposing the following revisions. One, uh, under roles, we propose propose a revision to make small grammatical edits to better set expectation. Uh, for councils' participation or role in community conversations. Uh, under roles, proposed revision to add more detail on administration's role in community conversations. Uh, number three, proposed proposed revision to remove may determine via consensus what items to include in summary reports. The rationale here, the attendance at conversations varies too much to carry this out. Administration currently includes everything. And gives the opportunity for participants to review the reports to council. Thus far, the feedback is very positive on those reports going to council. Number four, the areas of focus. So proposed proposed revision to remove recreation, arts and culture, as well as the environmental responsibility conversation. And the rationale, these topics come up at the life stage focus conversations. Having separate conversations for some topics separates potential collaborators instead of bringing them together. And I'll, I'll just pause here because we had a really good example of this. I think Council Komodo was there. We were at the adult life stage conversation. And due to the topics and the people around the table, that conversation uh, very much focused on business. Um, and the support to business and what uh, you know, was reasonable for the town to do versus the chamber versus tourism. And so. That conversation is a great example. Of where we have seen something like environmental issues or arts and culture issues. Um, now are meant to be focused currently under the current policy are meant to be focused under their own banner. Whereas they do apply to the life stages. And so that's why, given all the information that we've got for you, uh, we are proposing to go to go back to where the success lies in this model. And work on other methods for um, or support other methods for those specific topics. And so. Uh, number five, the proposed revision to remove recreation, arts and culture, as well as environmental responsibility. Uh. Sorry, I was on number four, right? No, I was on number five now and remove the column uh, in the length of the meeting. So that just clarifies that chart. Uh, number six, information flow, proposed revision to reduce reporting to two times from three times a year with a midway report in June and an annual report in December. And number seven, under information flow as well, we propose revision to remove the council to community conversation section. The rationale, council may direct administration to investigate matters raised at community conversations by motion passed by majority vote. The C A O would then determine how to best carry out that motion. This follows regular municipal flow of direction, council to C A O and then through to administration. And then under responsibilities, we propose revisions to better clarify council uh, responsibilities with community conversation as well as uh, some of the information on staffing. So you have the relevant uh, legislation, you have the relevant strategic priorities. And there's no cost to implement the community conversations policy, no change to the cost as they are included in the budget. Um, the removal of arts, culture, recreation, conversation focus areas would free up additional staff capacity to focus on other council priorities, including the public engagement policy. And so then the attachment is the proposed draft and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Uh, Counselors. Questions? Council.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, through you to Director Reed. So within the current community conversations, then if we remove recreation business and environment. Would then at those conversations, we put a lens on something within each of those topics for people to contribute so that we're still getting that feedback?
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to Council Calhoun. Um, yes, and we will uh. In in our promotional materials, which we are waiting to deliver uh, based on council's uh, recommendation. Uh, we will describe to people exactly what the importance of the life stage conversations is. And at the conversations, the group in attendance definitely steers that conversation. So. Uh, as the example I gave the other day, we had an excellent bunch of information from community futures specifically. That prompted a huge conversation that went from tourism to the the adult um, outreach workers aspect, to the seniors outreach worker aspect. To the um, arts and culture aspect and back and forth. And so that's exactly where the success of this model lies is that it is a bit more open ended. But yes, we definitely will tell everyone that this is how uh, the success of this model works is that we bring these topics to the table.
Thank you for that.
Council tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I really appreciate the report and the information here and I, I have to. Uh, first of all, apologize to uh, the former director that is now a counselor that was making us aware of. You know, some of the redundancies of moving into this format and um, you know, I I appreciate. Um, you know, the the info that we have here and um. Aside from that, there were some uh, redundancies and things that weren't working in other committee structures. That forced us to like. Evaluate and and change direction in the way we were doing. So this, I was grateful to try and. I guess fail or, you know, find out where the shortcomings were with the new concept. And I'm glad that at least. We we gave it uh, a little bit more of an extensive thought to to try to to retool things that. There might be other opportunities to to revisit what we could do in a future committee of of some sort. Uh, if there's a desire for it. But anyway, um, again, I'm I'm happy with the recommendations and the role clarity here. Thank you.
Marilyn.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Director Reed. Um. I had a couple of. Questions, if I, if I may just ramble. Um. On the uh, the draft. Policy document. Can you help me out in in a membership? Section. There are four different sentences, um, and I'm not sure whether that final se- sentence is intended to. Apply to the entire paragraph or just. The last two points. So any resident is welcome. Additionally, some other people are welcome. And then there's a rule. Um, that says there's a short application process. My question is, is that intended to apply to everyone, all Jasper residents or just to? Um, those who fit that special category of. Being part of an organization and in either of them. Can that application be filled out on the spot if somebody shows up in person to a meeting? Um, would there be any hesitation in allowing them to see the table?
Um, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to your worship, uh, very astute. Oh, I've said that too many times today. Excellent question. Thank you very much. Um, you have highlighted exactly it can happen and does happen. We welcome all comers at every meeting and the short application process is just so that we get their contact information. There's, there's no formal, uh, you know, uh, survey you have to fill out and and requirements you have to meet. It is simply so that we ensure we are keeping track of who attends and how we can then communicate with them in the future. So it's very straightforward. And yes, it can occur at your very first meeting. You don't have to pre-register. You can show up and then we will. Uh, take your application by your very presence and then uh, the facilitator will connect to ensure that we get your name and and email.
Well, I appreciate that response. I wonder whether you might consider. Changing the wording to say. There is a registration process because the entire intent of community conversations was that it is not application based. We don't. Select or discern in any way. Um, but a registration process might be a better description of what we do. If I may continue, it's the top of. The second page of the draft document. This is probably a repetition was there already, but it. It refers to um, administration having the ability. To dispatch. Subject matter experts. And I wonder whether we should reconsider that. I. Suspect that it's probably never been used. And as you indicated earlier. The the makeup of the group changers week by week or month by month. And so it's hard to imagine. A scenario where. A group sitting on one month would say, you know, we need to hear from subject matter expert about this. So can you arrange one for next month? It it's in there, but it just doesn't seem to me that it is anything that. Is of practical value. And I I wonder whether if subject matter experts are needed. Uh, the question can come from the group and be assigned without. Administration appointing the subject matter expert to go to another meeting.
Um, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to your worship. Uh, there are two aspects to that question. One is, for example, the life stage specific outreach workers are definitely the subject matter experts that we send on purpose. To every life stage meeting. So there's that one aspect I want to be very clear about. Um, uh, the second aspect, let's say that uh. Um, uh, the environment comes up repeatedly at the adult life stage because. It's because it, and I mean, we know this to be a fact. That's why we tried the environmental community conversation. So the environmental issues will come up, bubble up. They, the trend is identified. It it is responsible of the facilitator administrator to say, ah, this is. Two, three, four meetings now. This has come up regularly. It's not one person's soapbox. As we do, we evaluate everything that comes through. And then we would say, ah, now's the time where perhaps uh. Uh, you know, our municipal energy manager could bring some extra information to the next meeting. And then we would ask him to come to that meeting, given his director's approval. Uh, but it wouldn't be where the group is sitting around the table like community conversations members are saying, well, why isn't the municipal energy manager here? That's not how that would work. And so that's what we're reflecting here is there, we believe there will be times, so every life stage conversation that an outreach worker should be there. But we also believe there will be times, you know what? The recreation project is a good example. We are purposefully going to send someone to the community conversations to update the members that attend for all the life stages because we know it's gonna impact them. So that subject matter expert. Will possibly be me, but but I will go there to those community conversations on purpose to alert the community that this. Trend that we know is coming, a bit more specific than say the trend of of, you know, food insecurity, but. But it's specific trend, the renovation is coming, and we believe community conversations need to hear from that subject matter expert. So does that answer your question, Your Worship?
It does, yes, thank you. Not to to diminish your expertise. That was not the type of subject matter expertise that I thought was referred. So I was thinking much more technical, not. Administrative in in that sense. So I'm I'm content with that. Um. If I may, one more, the following sentence, um, and again, I can credit. You, Director Reed. Um, for introducing um, this phrase into our lexicon. Um. Although I think when it started, it was not scope, authority and budget. It was scope, budget and capacity. Um, which meant something different to me. And so I I simply suggest that. To those words, we consider adding. Two additional filters. Because it it concerns me um. That maybe conversations have now been authored the potential of. Adapting. Strategic priorities. And so something could be within scope, could be within authority, could be within budget. But should not be run through a filter of whether it aligns with council strategic priorities. And should not also be run through a filter of whether or not. Moving a suggestion forward might negatively impact. Existing capacity levels. Um. And I, I would expect that. A director would have those matters in mind anyway, but. It it seems to be two additional filters that. Would logically be applied anyway. And I wondered whether they, whether you might consider that. They'd be added. So words simply indicating that. Just because it was set at a community conversation and even though it might be within authority, scope and budget. Um, it's not aligned with priorities. We're not gonna go down that path. And. If it will take. Our workers away from something else where they're focused on priority item to do this. And that's not where we're going either. So. I I just invite you to think about whether we could add. Additional terms.
Right, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to your worship. I will tell you that administration sees scope, authority and budget. Containing capacity and the strategic priorities. Uh, as it contains uh, relevant laws and regulations. So for us, those words contain our our, the box we sort of work in. Um, I, having said that, would absolutely love counsel to to uh, in inform this policy, change the policy to meet their needs for sure.
Thank you for that. Those are my questions. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson.
And Council tomorrow.
Yeah, and I appreciate um, that level of thought. And um, as you were delivering that, your worship. Um, you know, I was thinking the same thing that um, I I believe that uh, Director Reed was sort of iterating in the fact that I think. Those elements are encompassed and like for me, when I think about scope, I'm hoping. That and and my understanding is that's the strategic priority would be in in involved in that. And maybe throughout the other, the other two. So um, much like we're uh, being recommended to uh, reduce the reporting back. To council, I I I think keeping things uh, you know, clean and and with a shorter thought pattern like this uh. A concise, a more concise filter, I think is reasonable, not to argue against mayor, but I I'm hoping that. All those considerations are in those three filters, thinking.
That's right.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Director Reed. Um. That I was encouraged to hear you uh, indicate that you saw the value and importance of the outreach workers attending. Um, the life stage specific uh. Conversations. Um, but and. I just, my only worry was the uh, soft wording of administration may attend or send staff. Um, from time to time or as. From time to time or as requested, it. It is my observation that there are other municipal positions that may. Be wonderful eyes and ears on the community. For instance, people working in the aquatic center or the activity center who might provide. Good information about emerging trends or thoughts and concerns in the community. And I'm just may use that one example, then maybe others.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Waxer, absolutely true. And so I mentioned outreach workers only because that's probably the cleanest, clearest example. But you're absolutely right. The fitness and aquatic center, the arena, the activity center. Those staff are, are at the front lines. And so they are aware of trends, gaps and, and opportunities. And so, yes. There will be more opportunity within community development specifically. And there will be more staff who are appropriate at those age group, or, or sorry, life stage conversations. Counselors, anything further?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through you to Mr. Reed. I see in councils responsibilities that. We ensure municipal councils appointed to participate in each community conversation. It fails to say an alternate for each one as well. Was that intentional to? Not have any formal alternates and then whichever council is, are available could become an alternate?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick. We would look to council's direction. If, if you're comfortable with the way it has been working, which is sort of ad hoc, as you've discussed. Then we would leave it as is. But if you would like to see a designated alternate, then we would of course change the policy to meet your needs.
I don't think it was ad hoc up until now, though. I think we, we were assigned. So there are still assignments, yet, yet some of the ones were unassigned because they've been deleted.
But the point being, there was a counselor and an alternate. And in the policy. As I'm reading it, it's a counselor appointed. There is no alternate designated. So if that is what we wish is to have a counselor, and then if a counselor can't make it. It's up to them to find an alternate. Or do we want to re-appoint an alternate in each of the areas? And I think that's probably prudent. Because then, you know, we have four different. Areas and not, you know, again, it doesn't have to be absolutely equal and fair. That each counselor is appointed, you know, minimum of two. But it turns out that we end up with, you know, someone only having one appointment. That's fine as well. I just think we need to have a pre-arranged alternate for each one of them.
That is the current pace. We do. So you're just saying this policy should right.
Excellent. Okay.
Yeah, and if you want to add that, you know, I'm very excited. And embrace the fact that we do have appointments now to, to those conversations. And, and I like the definitions within the roles there for counselors too, because I, you know, from our last. Retreat there and, and having some conversations, I, I really liked the angle that Counselor. Paul was taking and coming prepared and, and reviewing what's relevant on council actions, current council actions. And, and what that might bring to the conversation. So again, I think it's, it's. It's something that we're building on and something that we're, we're working towards, you know, making better. And I'm glad to be part of that. Thank you.
Big answers, anything more? It's not entertaining emotion.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, just before, and as far as making motion, there are a couple of items that. The mayor invited administration to change the policy that's your policy. And so if you want to change it, it suggests that you could do that when you make the motion. So you might want to do, uh, can you direct my council adopt the revised conversation policy? With the following changes and then council could insert those changes. The ones that I heard were to, you know, under membership, the final sentence. Where it says there is a short application process to replace that with, there is a registration process. The other one that I heard. And this one I may be not quite as clear about, but I, in the first paragraph on the second page. The discussion around additional considerations of whether administration acts around capacity and council priorities. So if. You wanted to incorporate something there, I think you probably could. Administration was comfortable that, that we would do something that was not aligned with council's priorities. We wouldn't do something if we didn't have capacity to it. But the council wished to have more certainty, you could insert some words in there. Along the lines of, in the second sentence, when relevant opportunities identified. Are aligned with council's priorities and all within administration's capacity. Capacity being the word, scope, authority and budget. Administration will incorporate the input received into their work. So, so, so there's two. Those two adjustments there that you discussed. And then there's also the one around membership. And council wished to incorporate those changes. It's just that we just want to identify that in your motion.
With one friendly amendment. I, I prepared to make that motion. Those encompass the comments that I had with the one exception and on the last one. I would prefer to change the word will to me. Administration may incorporate. Rather than will, but with that one exception, I would make a motion that. Section three, related information, membership, the change to say that. There is a short registration process and individuals may register and start participating at any time throughout the year. And I may have to call on Mr. Given for the wording that he had. I think he said when. Relevant opportunity, this or this is a change to the second. The first full sentence at the top of the second page of the policy. When relevant opportunities. Identified align with council's strategic priorities.
And, and all within administration's capacity.
Capacity, scope, authority and budget. Administration may incorporate the input received at community conversations into their work.
Excellent, counselors. Everybody understand the question? The motion, sorry. I'll call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed. And so I think at this point, we're going to take a ten minute break. Oh, sorry, Mayor.
Going to suggest that before we take a break, which would be welcome. We recommend that council adopt the community conversation policy as amended.
Thank you for that. Counselors, all in favor? There are none opposed? We'll take a ten minute break. We'll be back here at eleven forty-one. Well, welcome back, everyone. We're moving on to agenda item seven point four. Permanent continuous position request from community development. And that's Christopher Reed takes through that one.
Thank you again, Deputy Mayor Wilson and, and counsel. So indeed, the. Item before you is permanent continuous position request. The recommendation is that committee recommend council approve the conversion of the following positions from term. To permanent continuous within municipality's staff establishment chart. And I realize, of course, that that shouldn't have read. And we can talk about it in a second, but one of the positions we're proposing is a contract position. So I should have clarified that better. I apologize now. But we do have one client services coordinator, which is currently a contractor. We have two settlement workers and a one community development coordinator that are currently term employees. And we would propose that all four of those positions be, be made permanent continuous. The alternatives are that committee direct administration to bring forward additional information returned to future committee meeting, or that committee. Committee refer the matter to the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations. In the background, for a number of years, municipality has maintained grant-supported positions as term employees. Additionally, we've had a contractor fulfilling the role of client services coordinator due to practical constraints of the individuals, which we no longer need to follow. The following definitions from the QP collective agreement are helpful in clarifying typical difference between these two particular employment types. The continuous employee is an employee hired on a continuous basis who has successfully competed to completed the required probationary period. And a term employee is an employee who performs one or more of the following. Specific term not exceeding five months, or hired to fill a vacancy of more than thirty days. Or is employed for work overloads and special projects of more than thirty days with specific start and finish dates. Or works regularly scheduled continuous shifts. And the community development department currently has five full-time continuous employees, the five outreach workers that are sustained each year by external grant funding. In some cases with decades-long recurring agreements. These positions were converted to continuous several years ago to the benefit of both the employees and the municipality. And this exact situation applies to the settlement worker positions as well as the community development coordinator position. The client services coordinator position evolved from a continuous position in years past to a contract position. Due to the restrictions of the available staff over the years. The existing contractor currently, who is a municipal employee on secondment as, as the contractor. No longer has those same restrictions. And what we've been able to do with the contractor working regular hours in our office. It's brought many benefits to our operational efficiency and effectiveness. And so the situation is no longer appropriate as a contract. While funded largely by external grant funding, all of the positions under consideration here are in longer term agreements with high expectation of renewals. The positions all work out of the outreach office at six twenty-seven Patricia Street. So that little chart shows you the client service coordinator. This position was established in twenty fifteen. Grant funded by long-term funders. And the funding has been in place for fifteen years or longer. They do the oversight of client services, the reporting on client services to the funders and the family resource network lead. Settlement worker, two of those established in twenty eighteen, grant funded since twenty eighteen, and the current contract expires in twenty twenty-five. Very high likelihood of renewal, especially given the federal government stated. Or goal of increasing immigration. It is unlikely to, to do that with less support in this, of this nature. So they do one-on-one support to newcomers in Jasper. Support in the settlement journey within Jasper and support to immigrants of all ages. And the community development coordinator established again in twenty eighteen, and this is thirty-five percent currently funded within municipal budget through ESS funding. And sixty-five percent IRCC funded since twenty eighteen. Again, that same contract which expires in twenty twenty-five with a high likelihood of continuation. Emergency social services planning and program integration into the emergency management plan. The Jasper local immigration partnership engagement and implementation of the settlement strategy. And engagement of local newcomers through the newcomer network and then events like culture. So the discussion is making these positions permanent continuous municipal positions would not affect the twenty twenty-three budget. And budgets going forward, providing the grant funding continues. A key point of discussion, of course, is that in the event these longer term contracts were to end. Administration would then bring the service deliverables, costs and funding options for these positions to the applicable years budget deliberations. While these conversions would have no immediate impact to the twenty twenty-three budget, this would result in increased employee equity, improving morale. And enabling more long-term work and planning in these areas. I can directly say that the outreach staff that have been converted many years ago. Some of those outreach staff are into their second, third decade of service with us. So we do know that this does bring. That, that long-term commitment from both parties. So two of the staff currently serving these roles have been in term positions for four and a half years now. While the other two are at seventeen and nineteen years of service with the municipality. The relevant legislation is listed, strategic plan relevance. You know, relationships isn't often listed first, but this one's great. Nurture our most important relationships, which are those within our organization. All of whom share a commitment to best serve our community. And then organizational excellence and trust our staff to develop the healthy relationships with the people they serve. And ensure residents receive quality service that provides strong value for dollar. And I will mention that, you know, staff turnover is not strong value for dollar. And so we know that converting these positions does. Has, has in the past led to long-term employee retention. Inclusion considerations, each of these, each of these positions advances our organizational commitment to promoting equity, diversity and inclusion. And the inclusion tool was reviewed for this request. All related conversion costs can be accommodated within the approved twenty twenty-three operating budget through our external funders. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you for that, Counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through you. I forgot my. Acronym or abbreviation checklist, IRCC funded.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick and counsel. So IRCC is immigration, immigration, refugee. Citizenship Canada. And family resource network is FRN. We often abbreviate that one. MOJ is municipality of Jasper. ESS is emergency social services. Sorry for those acronyms.
So the one I couldn't get was the one we were both struggling with. Thank you for that.
We say it so often, IRCC, IRCC, but immigration, immigration, refugees, citizenship, Canada.
Counselors, questions?
In the absence of any other counselor, sorry if I interrupted somebody else. Without, th- these don't have any budget implication. Other than potentially, are, are there changes in benefits for term employees? Are, are these employees because of their longevity already receiving benefits?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick. These, these employees are full time, so they are receiving benefits already. And the, the, there is one change which I believe. Actually, yeah, and it might be that they are now eligible for LAP. But again, we do have the ability to accommodate that in the existing budget. And LAP is local authorities pension plan, another acronym.
That one I actually knew, but thank you. It, it is when you talk about. Our organizational excellence and the fact that it helps with. When you are involved in a pension plan for longevity, it, it just helps in the retention of employees.
At the risk of taking another lap around a similar question. You know, in the, in the financial here, it states that all related. Conversion costs can be accommodated within the current operating budget. I have to ask the question, how does that reflect twenty-four and beyond? And as far as potential increases go. With relation to positions.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Demota. So as these are largely externally funded. The changes will be accommodated by the external funding. So we will see a change to our budget. We will not see a change to what we would call the tax requisition.
Can you speak to the difference between? A term and, and a permanent position when it comes to, you know. If our money doesn't come through. So, you know, what are the requirements with QP, et cetera?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So that is the risk that should all the external funding disappear. Then the municipality would have to assume or decide not to continue those services. So again, with outreach as an example, so for twenty some odd years, we've been. Uh, so, uh, again, with outreach as an example, so for twenty some odd years, we've been able to continually receive the external funders. If all of the external funding were to evaporate. Uh, then council would be presented with a budget that would say to continue these services. This would be the cost to the municipality. Or there are other options that we might find, but but that is the, uh, bottom line. And so that's the risk that we take on and and. If that that risk exists for all services, right? I mean, the, the council could decide that recreation is too much serviced. And then we would then have to do a budget adjustment to accommodate that change in service. Uh, right now we are very, you know, uh, successful in attaining these long term ex- external funders. So we believe that this is the right move for what's the reality of the funding is stable. And the reality of the employees are stable, and so we want to treat them as best we can. Um, but that is that one risk that does exist that should the funding go away, council will have to choose what to do, what method of support would would come into play. Yeah, and if I can, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'd just say that administration, uh, would be providing recommendations to council. Um, so, uh, we certainly wouldn't, uh, abdicate our responsibility to manage the organization within the budget established by council. But we would bring opportunities forward to you to decide whether a service. Uh, if we no longer have the external financial support to do that service. Uh, we would bring an option to you and say, this is the cost of this service. Um, this is administration's estimation of its alignment or not with council's priorities. And based on that a lot, you know, alignment or lack of. Uh, here's what we recommend that you do with it. And so we wouldn't be, uh, setting up council where your position with no recommendations. Uh, you know, we, uh, as managers would would be filling, um, filling you in with the appropriate information and recommendation. And and as Director Reed said, you know, we acknowledge that there's a risk, uh, that that could change it. Sometimes you have to make difficult decisions and make difficult recommendations. Uh, our team believes that that relatively minor exposure to some potential risk in the future is, uh. Is not away the benefits, uh, providing these already sort of long term employees with equity with their colleagues. Um, and, uh, so that's why your students recognition is because we believe that that minor risk. Um, is, as I said, not offset by the benefits, certainly is greatly offset by the benefits of recognizing these employees as regular employees.
Yeah, I understand. Um, the, the question though, also included like Q P requirements. So what's the difference between, uh, say, if we were to have to, uh, cut that position? If the funding were there, uh, is it different between a permanent position and a term, uh, and a term like? I think I did.
Well, so certainly there would be, and I don't have a hand, uh, administration could find this, but, uh, we would have. So in a full time continuous position, if at any time, uh, municipality for whatever reason decides to discontinue that position. There are severance costs, uh, to the employee. I mean, municipality does have the ability to decide what services we want to deliver. And if, uh, the organization decides that it's no longer going to deliver a service for whatever reason, whether it's because of lack of funding. Uh, or change in priority, uh, we have the latitude to to discontinue services, uh, within a Q P. There are costs that severance costs, um, and that arrive. And the way that that's different from a term position is at the expiration of the term, we have no commitment to the employee or to the position. And so basically we're in a situation where every term, whether they're five years or shorter, wherever they are, there's sort of a. No commitments and, uh, I think we has demonstrated Director Reed's report, we have been. Renewing those commitments on a sort of cycle for quite some time in most cases here. Um, and that's the key difference. There were that continuous sort of view of that position is it's expected to continue. Um, and should it cease to exist, then there's a cost to that in terms of severance.
Luckily as term, there would not be a cost at terminations or not at at end of term.
Well, at the, at the end of the term, so the municipality decided discontinue a service during the term, that might be a little bit of a session.
Yeah.
Um, but so, so that's, you know, that's that change is that we're accepting that these are. Uh, expected to be ongoing services of the municipality is, I think, Director Reed's report shows because they have been. Um, and that really this is one equity issue with the staff. Uh, and we'd have the same obligations to those staff as we have any other continuous position. In scope, so convenient on you. Um, and as an employer, we have the same rights to discontinue the service or position at any time. I have the same obligations, uh, to buy compensation when a decision is discontinued. Uh, and so that really doesn't change. And again, that's do that with the vast majority of our employees. We have that same level of risk. I mean, council could decide tomorrow. And the director said, you know, unlike the circumstances, council will, we don't want to have swing. Then we have some obligations, you know, that service decisions made that we as administration have to enact. And that's just a part of running an organization, uh, in a unionized environment or running any organization frankly. That because there are common obligations that employers have to their employees under their law.
Okay, and if I may, there's one more. Um, well, it it has to do with servants, of course. Uh, the nineteen seventeen and nineteen year service. Uh, if it is a permanent position, do they start at one year service? And, uh, the other thing is. You know, there is with the, with the union, there's a seniority based, uh, uh, employment. I think, you know, you can kind of shuffle around if, uh, your position gets canceled. Would your seniority be the seventeen nineteen for years? Or would it be that we're moving into a new position starting at zero? So those are some questions you might not have those, but before I make a, the decision, I probably need those.
Uh, I can speak to. Well, in generalities. The one staff that is seconded, we would absolutely, that staff is very clear. The other staff was in a previous role, left that previous role to join a term position. I would have to go back and find out if in that change to the term position. All that seniority could have either been maintained or paid out. So specifically, we don't know. Um, but regardless. The goal here is again, some employee equity. So both of these employees, we would do the best we can by them, whatever the collective agreements and our employment standards would allow us to do. Would be our basic position, again, based on council's priority. I, I don't know if that's enough information. Um. Yeah, we. The, the seniority list, we already do it this way. They are already, uh, listed, the term employees, their seniority does count. So they are already in the seniority system. So I don't think that there's a, as much differentiation there as you might be perceiving. We're already.
I'm not perceiving anything. Oh, that's absolutely, but yeah, and and just, you know, information I would. I think if we, if this were proposed to us a budget, we could ask these questions and not move it forward so quickly. Um, so why wasn't this at budget twenty twenty three? I guess when we were adding and, uh, bringing in positions and, yeah, you know, we, I think we added. We're not where we're at, but we had a fair amount, right?
Uh, yes, and I will definitely, uh, take ownership for that. Uh, in my first year, I was learning the systems and did not fully understand this conversion system here in this municipality. And so I missed bringing this to you at that time. Um, it was on our radar, on my radar, and absolutely should have been done sooner. Um, and I apologize for that. Yeah, I appreciate the question, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and and I appreciate exactly what you were asking what you were. Um, but, you know, one thing that I want to highlight just for the record. Um, whatever council decides on this issue, it's depending today. The if if council saw fit to support the administrative recommendation, the same number of employees would be working for the municipality the day after. Right? I, I know the council understands that, but it just might not be clear when we talked about, uh, the last budget where we added net new positions. To the overall organization. So, uh, certainly these are term positions. Um, they've been term positions for, you know, repeated terms over time. Um, and so we're not talking about adding. New bodies and hiring new people who are saying that the people that have been working for us for some time will have more certainty. That their job will continue beyond whatever some sort of fixed term had previously been had. Um, and that they will be, uh, treated equitably and similarly with other employees that have the same sort of continuous. So I just want to make sure that that for the public is is clear that administration isn't proposing new services. Uh, and isn't proposing essentially new bodies. Uh, all the bodies that are here will still be here. It's just how those bodies, how those people in those positions have been treated.
And just before going to Council Demoto, uh, but there are term employees in other. Because, uh, departments in the, you know, sorry, the municipalities as well.
There are, and you know, there are a variety of reasons when where where we may, uh, need term positions. Um, they can be because we know that we only have seasonal work. Um, where we have something that only continues for the super season. I think that's used often operations, uh, area, um, maybe in, uh, uh. Uh, community development in the swimming area, um, or others, but you know, so we can see where there's seasonal work. And so there's a term position for a period of time that's well defined. And those employees may change year over year, you might get a different person come and help us with grounds maintenance one summer and they may not come back next summer. Um, these are, uh, and we may use them where there are special projects. Where there's dedicated funding to do a certain function for a limited period of time, uh, a term position. Um, the challenge can be in recruiting. Uh, an example might be, uh, the recent decision around, um, administrative capacity for the discussion. Uh, administration proposed a position. Uh, I think that budget, there's some discussion about whether it was appropriate to do that as a full time continuous, which was what was proposed. Um, contracted services or term position and, uh. Council might remember the, at the budget table, my advice was if council was ready to establish that as a full time continuous position. It was actually better to do a contracted service because I don't think we would be able to recruit. The type of help we needed if we could only guarantee some day job for a year. So, so there are different use cases and so administration will still use the use cases where we deem it appropriate, sorry. You use a different types of opponent. Or we deem it appropriate in this case. Or we see services that have been delivered for the municipality for quite some time by generally the same employees for quite some time. Um, we start saying, well, that looks like a regular function of the municipality. And so we don't see this as a seasonal work or as a special project where this is ongoing with this. If I may, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, one classic example of term is parental leave. So we specifically know that this person is leaving and we need to fill that space. Um, and so that's very finite, plus or minus a few months. But there is a difference as C A O given said, these are long term contracts. That we know have high likelihood of, of renewal because of historically, they're always getting renewed. Um, and so there is a difference here that it does, that brings these employees out of a term position. Uh, in in our estimation.
Counselor, and then that's what.
Thank you. And I, you know what? I appreciate your line of questioning, Deputy Mayor Wilson. And just to take a little bit more of a dive on that, um, you know, as addressing this, um, is to. Address the needs of the organization right now and and those positions. So, uh, from what counselor, uh, or deputy mayor was was alluding to, uh, there could be an opportunity where. When you find out what the ramifications of the conversion causes to a specific individual, they may not want to choose that option. Unless there is a desire by all of them to to move forward on this regardless of status. Um, and or, you know, compensation with, uh, tenure to the, to the business rate, so. Um, I think, I don't know if those things are considered at all, or if there's like a genuine desire for all those positions to move forward regardless.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Council Demoto, without speaking directly of any H R issues, we have discussed this with the employees. And and that's part of what informs us presenting today. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Through you Deputy Mayor Wilson to, uh, Director Reed. Please correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe that there are. Community development coordinators who are on shorter term, uh. Contracts where there isn't the, the high level of confidence that the, of the continuity of, uh. Of resources coming in. So this isn't a blanket thing for the whole department, but, uh, very strategically. Um, right, a strategic recommendation on positions that are, you have a high level of confidence will continue.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Council Waxer. That's absolutely correct. There are several, uh, community development coordinator positions that are funded by finite term contracts. And, uh, that have explicitly either said directly, this is for this period and there is no, uh, chance of renewal. Um, and so, yes, that we're not proposing any of those come forward. Um, and and yes, it does create, we have continuous in term then. Uh, but all of these positions are in these long term, longstanding and again, uh, high likelihood of renewal contracts.
I think Mayor Ireland and then, uh, Council Governor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Although I am, I think persuaded, um, on the employee equity argument. To, to favor the recommendation. To Deputy Mayor Wilson to you, Director Reed. Am I wrong, um, to see this as a form of downloading by the federal government? And in particular with respect to settlement services and you use the adverb and, uh, whatever it was refugees and, um.
Immigration.
Immigration, I mean, typically immigration and refugees. Are not within the ambit of municipal government. It is a federal matter. They make all the law regarding that. It's, it's in their house. But it benefits them, it seems to me, to give us money. Um, and then we fund the program. And so now here we are. Well, they fund the program, but we hire the, the people. So here we are in this juncture where should we change from? Term to continuous, but that comes with. What I think falls in that category of unfunded liability. So we are now responsible for severance costs. So just imagine if the federal government decided that they were going to take on their own obligation. Immigration and refugees, that's their stuff, but they were going to do it regional. So there'd be no need for us to maintain the service, the money would stop, but now we've got the obligation to the employee. To me, that just smacks of downloading from the federal government. And I might be prepared to pick up that, the risk of that because, of course, as long as they can get us to. To carry the risk, why would they stop this kind of contract? Um, but would this happen in another community, in a, in a different community? Would, would these be federal government employees providing this service? Um, to a community but as federal government employees?
Uh, I'd like Director Reed to speak to that, uh, would there be federal government employees in other communities? Because I believe there's an answer to that, but I just wanted to speak to the, the other part, first worship of. The, uh, downloading of a potential liability, um, and just focusing on that. You know, I think we, we, in terms of the discussion, federal funding, that particular service ended. The municipality would have an employee and no funding for that position. We could have an opportunity to decide whether we, if we wanted to get other work. That we needed that employee to do, we could have them do completely different. Doesn't mean that that employee is hired to do only that job, but we have that attitude as an employer to change people's work and certain strengths. So this, you know, we would have to decide whether we needed that many employees. Uh, and if we said we didn't need that many employees, we must have a liability, but that actually is. You know, I don't know that's as direct a federal downloading of a liability cost as it might be. Because we could reassign that employee to other work. So if we had a vacant position somewhere else, um, that we didn't need, you know, so there's shifting that's available there. Uh, maybe I'll pass that back to Director Reed about how this is handled in other communities, whether we're in a liar or whether we're similar. Uh, thank you very much to you given, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to your worship and counsel. Uh, two factors, one, uh, I R C C especially recognizes this and there is, uh, administration support in their contract. So the unfunded liability part of this, we are somewhat compensated for. Um, but the second part is even as simply as F C S S, which we could also argue is a downloading of a provincial responsibility. Um, the model is a best practice model where in a sense, I I would phrase it this way. in a sense, I I would phrase it this way, local solutions for local challenges. So we are the best situated to understand how to best spend FCSS funds. We are the best situated how to best spend the IRCC funds um and all these acronyms. But the the industry best practice, if I say industry, this is a government industry is that the local solutions aren't funded to be delivered locally, funded federally to be delivered locally or funded provincially to be delivered locally. So I I feel quite confident and as we get better at this, we are um uh even being more aware of these costs. Um, but some of my work is is supported by the IRCC contract because I have to supervise those those people. So we are uh getting better at being very clear about administrative costs such as uh you're referencing here. But it is definitely um a manner of downloading, but it's also a manner of service focusing. So there it's very unlikely we're going to get a federal office in this town. We're just not big enough. But we have two settlement orders. And that's because we do have the work. You wouldn't have that same work in Fairview or any other smaller community. So um and I hope that answers some of those calls.
Appreciate that. Yes. And as I say, on the employee equity question, I was already on board. But it does seem to me your comments about best practice at the federal level to to deliver services locally. Perhaps that can help with this star discussions with Parks Canada about the delivery of other services in this in this community. Maybe that is best practice. To get it done locally. I believe that to another day. Thanks.
Council Governor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, I support um this initiative. Um one and a half years ago was involved when we made the other community outreach workers permanent and the funding hasn't gone away. So I don't think this will be. And on the settlement workers, um, I sit on the Alberta River Valley Committee for Immigration and they are heavily involved in that committee. And this program is in place and it's going to be there for the next three to five years. Where we need that program to maintain um our labor charter in Jasper. So I can see the funding continuing past twenty twenty five for these positions. So I do support them.
Any further concerns? Councilor Malde.
I would be prepared to make a motion if uh there's no further discussion. I recommend the committee recommend council approve the conversation as part of the conversion of the following positions from term to permanent continuous within the municipality staff establishment chart. That being one client services coordinator, two settlement workers and one community development coordinator.
Thank you for that. Counselors, any comments, questions? Or call the question? Somebody else has a motion, all in favor? They're not opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, Mr. Reed is off the hook for now. I'm moving into seven point five. Hocoe Japan Initiative twenty twenty three and I have uh this is Nedon.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Good afternoon, Mayor Wilson. Um, I'm here to speak to the Hocoe Japan Initiatives twenty twenty three request for decision. Um, as you will see in the report, we have a few recommendations for council consideration. One is uh that committee recommend council approve uh a delegation to Hocoe in the fall and clarifying uh council's intentions with regards to expenses and funding. If uh the request is approved and also uh this would allow administration to start planning for that initiative, which would include uh working with a travel agency and also coordinating coordinating with Hocoe and making sure that our counterparts are working with us to make this happen. So there's has been a budget allocation of ten thousand dollars to support this initiative in the fall. But we are looking to confirm council's intentions uh via motion. So uh committee recommendation towards council. Uh, the second item is regarding the high school student exchange for twenty twenty three. And essentially, uh, the recommendation here from administration is uh that council not pursue the high school student exchange in twenty twenty three and direct administration to review the program and develop recommendations for how it could operate in the future. Some of the challenges that we're facing uh in twenty twenty three with regards to those Hocoe initiatives is a workload for the legislative services area. And we're also reconsidering different aspects of uh our participation with Hocoe and the student exchange program itself. Uh, we do have some concerns with regards to liability and sending unaccompanied minors overseas uh outside of a formalized program. So as a one-off program that the municipality Jasper operates is is one of our concerns. But also uh just the amount of time and effort being dedicated to uh enacting this program is is one of our considerations behind putting the recommendation forward as it stands. And the third item, um that committee direct administration to draft terms of reference for the hospitality and twin communities committee. So that committee is listed on uh the boards and committees appointments that council does every year at organizational meeting. The hospitality part of that committee is meant to accommodate uh ad hoc requests from dignitaries or other politicians that come to town and uh from time to time, they want to meet with council. And so we've had counselors in the past help with that. And then the twin communities part is uh we actually have two sister cities. One is Hocoe and the other oh, I should have been prepared for this. Wickenburg, thank you, Council Demota. Uh, at the other end of Highway ninety-three in the United States is our other sister city, which we've established, but we never really pursued a whole lot uh on that front over the years. So this um report also raises some questions around um those sister city initiatives, how much uh administrative time is spent towards them? What kind of uh strategic priorities alignment are we seeing or some policy direction and um leadership from council on those aspects? And that's also contemplated as part of drafting a terms of reference for the committee. You will see that we listed uh several different alternatives which uh relate to each of the recommendations. So either to allocate funding differently with regards to a delegation to Hocoe in the fall uh to council to direct to defer a delegation to Hocoe could be an option as well. Um, you could uh direct administration to push forward with a high school student exchange in twenty twenty three. Um, the the second last option is the possible termination of the Jasper Hocoe sister city relationship, which um is an alternative, not a not a recommendation. And um or that committee receive the report for information, take no further action. And then after thinking about this for a few days, I think um another alternative that I would add would be to direct administration to seek alternatives to the administration of sister city relationships. And namely where I'm driving with this is for third-party organizations or a nonprofit group to be created. So for example, there are friendship societies in lots of communities that are a separate entity from the municipality that are registered and organized and follow processes and protocols. But are established separately and would allow us to transfer the workload to a third party instead of using our legislative coordinator's time to work on those initiatives. Um, so I sort of was leading there in uh the end of the discussion item. And that was part of the uh student exchange program specifically. So giving us a chance to ask around in the province, see if there's anyone else who's organizing um student exchanges with Japan specifically or other we're familiar with other organizations that provide that kind of service. Um, but in any event, I believe uh the background and discussion should give you the information you need to address those requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nedon. Councilor Mott.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and and thank you Director Nedon for the information that we have for it. And I appreciate the work it's on. Even my microphone thinks I should shut up. Um I did a lot of contemplation on this since we discussed this last and since budget and I was really inspired by uh the documents that were in our um agenda today and how well detailed they were. And it prompted me to think that maybe postponing a trip for another year for twenty twenty four could help us uh build and establish with all the criteria and information that we have here um on a really well-sounded budget conversation on what the total costs are going to be. What involvement are um other agencies in the community want to contribute to this? And uh so we can have a detailed uh concept of what it might cost per counselor to go. I, you know, we understand that some of the, there's an understanding that some of this funding is going to go to the mayor, maybe all of it for for participation, but um, could we evaluate through ours uh strategic planning? Um, you know, using some of those filters and saying, okay, well, is this a priority for us to go? And then how much could we incorporate this into council budgets for twenty twenty four? If more of us wanted to go and how many people from the community and who wants to be represented there? Um, you know, I was thinking of taking this to the Jasper partnership and having purposeful uh agenda item based conversations there on, you know, getting forward a a well-rounded delegation and see what the costs are involved. Um, you know, a a travel agent now to help prepare and then maybe focus on what some of the future costs could be if we were going to go because now we're we're looking at doing this, getting a travel agent involved. And then we're piecing together something as we go along as opposed to having like a document that's well-informed that says this is how much it's going to cost per person. And you know, maybe this can encourage some uh local participation to go from people in the community and say, okay, well, we understand this is what the cost is going to be. You know, it it sounds affordable or you know, it just uh it'll give people an idea of, you know, what is affordable and and who can go. And I think that having more information out there and the longer we have it out there might uh create uh a better I guess, embracement of, you know, buy-in of of what we're doing and why we want to do it. So I I would be more uh prone to putting this off for a year and having a better budget discussion and have more details in front of us. And um having the support from our other agencies and community members and see what that feels like going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, uh, Council Demota. Uh, Councilors? Want to add anything? Way in? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wilson through you to Ms. Nedon. I just noticed the earlier pronoun. That surprised me. I I'm interested in your add-on comment about seeking um a third party to take care of this entire file. Um, the the twin municipalities issue. So council took a handoff many years ago from the Chamber of Commerce for both the relationship with Hocoe and the student exchange. But our counterparts in Hocoe offer me through the Hocoe International Exchange Association, uh, which is separated apart from municipal government. So we get um correspondence from each and they are different and they have an association that deals with such things. And I think that's a, that's a wonderful suggestion. How would you see proceeding with that and what sort of direction would you need from council at this time to proceed down that path? And should that be done in advance of work to build a terms of reference? So I can imagine building terms of reference is going to take some staff time and capacity. Um, and it could be potentially wasted effort if if uh sometime after that we go open up for a third party. So can you just address how you would see advancing advancing um the the walk-on suggestion that we look for a for a third party to take over the the entire matter?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Mayor Ireland. Thank you for the question. Um, I think you you raised some valid points, especially in regards to how the terms of reference would be effective. And um understanding that the third recommendation in the report currently would contemplate terms of reference for the current hospitality and twin communities committee, which could be influenced by uh further research and and advice from administration on how to handle the sister city relationships file more generally. And I think um a a a motion that would have some general wording to direct administration to reevaluate or to review how sister city relationships are administered, generally speaking, so not not directly directing us to investigate the possibility of a friendship society, for example, but to just generally speaking, ask us to review and provide um recommendations for how this file or this matter, generally speaking, could be handled, would give us the freedom to explore what could happen, which could include another body in the municipality currently. So whether the Chamber of Commerce or another service group or and I and I don't know how realistic that would be. And that's the work that would be entailed in researching what the possibilities are, but either an existing group could take it on the same way the municipality took it on from the Chamber of Commerce years ago. It could go to another community organization. Or my understanding of how uh friendship societies work, they are uh an independent nonprofit organization that is set up under um provincial legislation for nonprofits and then council could have an involvement and a representative on that border committee. But it wouldn't necessarily be a council committee. Or or maybe it could. And that's where we need to go into our research and and understand how it works in other communities. And I do know that other communities in Alberta function that way. So not only does Hocoe do that, but um some municipalities that are part of the Alberta-Japan Twin Municipalities Association, which I found out recently through Mizeco and that there's only eleven municipalities participating in that association, which kind of took me by surprise. Uh, but I'm sure amongst them, we could uh get some information on how they handle it. And and I know that the work is not necessarily all conducted by municipal staff. And so leveraging community volunteers who would be involved in a nonprofit uh society or organization, I think would just generally speaking, foster more community involvement and ownership in the relationship and keeping it going versus keeping it an internal. If you wish, as a municipal initiative is is what it has been for the uh the last number of years and through um not not that much administrative and policy time dedicated to it is 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 the ongoing challenge we've been facing since since Mrs. Cahill's retirement, essentially. So directly to your question, a general motion asking us to reevaluate the sister city relationship program, generally speaking, would be the the general motion we would need to complete that work and come up with the appropriate recommendations.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hall, then Kellarabbi and then Demota.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, quick question for Director Nedon. Is there a reason it's this fall? Is it a cycle of Mr. Money Years or are we just choosing this fall?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the Council of All. Um, this fall mainly because of the ten thousand dollar budget allocation that council put in in twenty twenty three. Um, but also because fall is the typical time of year that we've uh sent delegations to Hocoe in the past. And also because there's an event in early November that they usually uh like to get delegations involved in. And so it sort of revolves around this early November date and hence the fall. But why twenty twenty three? It's because of the budget allocation by council and I believe the last time we sent a delegation might have been twenty twelve. So we've received delegations from Hocoe here in Jasper since then, but the last outgoing was twenty twelve.
Just another quick follow-up question. Um, if we don't go this fall, will that money just carry over to next year? If we go the following fall? Um, and then my other question was I I know it's not just council that, you know, anybody in the community can go with. Is that correct?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Um the financial question, this this money came from reserves. So the ten thousand dollars we've been uh or council has been allocating two thousand dollars annually to that reserve for the last number of years. So it's a transfer from reserves into operating for expanding in twenty twenty So it it's a transfer from reserves into operating for expanding in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh it'd have to be verified with Mrs. Malatchak, but I think if council decided to not uh participate in the delegation. Then I think the money could reasonably go back to reserves. Um, and then to the question about uh who can go or how many people can go. Uh Ms. Baycorn has been working with Hakoni to give us a a maximum number of delegates that they could accommodate. Because there are implications and costs on their end to receiving a delegation and we're still waiting to hear back from them on that front. And traditionally, and again, we've lost a bit of corporate history here just to change changes in staffing. But my understanding is uh priority go into mayor and council and then the the cost. I mean, to be reviewed and there have some some current councillors or elected officials were in Hakoni before, but I think the cost used to be around. Maybe four thousand dollars as a ballpark, and I mean, the cost of travel since two thousand and twelve has probably changed, but I think it it was a significant. Uh enough amount of money that not everyone could afford to go necessarily, so the numbers sort of managed themselves. I think at one point there was a very large delegation, but for the most part, we were looking at a dozen people max.
Councillor Kelly.
For me, I can agree with councillor Demota about like Stephen twenty twenty-four, especially if you're paying the wrong way from council. It kind of gives us more time to prepare, um you know, like we're already into February and people have plans for this year. Kind of helps people budget, but I am curious, um when was the last time that we had a student exchange with Hakoni?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the councillor Keller MP, um two thousand and nineteen is the last time we sent students. And that detail is provided in, I believe, background. Um, so we had two years with no applicants in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And then two students who were sibling siblings participated in two thousand and nineteen. And then since two thousand and twenty, we just haven't run or advertised the program because of COVID restrictions, so um. And then for years before that, I think it was a mixture of one or two students, no students, and then. I want to say maybe fifteen to twenty years ago, there was, it was more popular, there were more students going.
Um, I know when I was involved with the Alberta Twin Cities Association, there was a number of friendship society. At the Chamber had one and um our head has quite a big one. And um I know that all their student exchanges went through the.
Thank you, councillor Demota.
Well, um, I really appreciate their recommendation that's before us and I feel that. We could easily break that down into to three separate motions, because I think that that. Um, there's three different things happening here and I know that you want a comprehensive uh movement towards something. Um, but you know, as. As with the the student exchange, I think that there's something still valuable there for the community and community members. And that should probably be considered to, you know, some more depth to what uh director Nedon was referring to. Um, I believe that uh a uh a terms of reference should be developed to a certain degree. Concerning all of our involvement with um what we want to do with sister city twinning. And then, you know, again, uh not to really pound home my my desire to to bump this back. But it's just more of having a a more comprehensive approach to to make a more sound. Um, decision with the information in front of us. So right now, um, we don't know how much it's going to travel, we don't know how many people can go, or we don't, like, there's a lot of what-ifs. And I'd like to see something in front of us that might involve our per diems, because I know that if I'm going there. Um, you know, and and in the past, we've we've allocated that amount of money. As council representation going on a trip, so could we use that? Uh, in in um concert with those expenses. So instead of saying, okay, I'm going to pay two thousand dollars to go and then I'm also going to claim for every day that I've gone. Plus all my other stuff on top of that, I think we can come and use a more inclusive package. To understand that, okay, well, maybe I'll take some of that as a loss in my participation in, you know, so that we're not. Doubling up on taxpayer dollars for our part participation, so there's a lot to contemplate there. So um I would, I would, I'm prepared to make some motions forward separately. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Nedon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, just if that helps uh the council process in in determining what motions to bring forward. I think the basic information we're looking for is whether or not to to prepare for a delegation to Hakoni in two thousand and twenty-three. And whether or not to prepare for student exchange program are are kind of the two uh program decisions that would impact. Administrative workload and things we need to plan for. So I understand that the the motions as they are presented might be modified, but what we're kind of looking for in terms of basic direction would be that. And then additionally, any other information that council might want to hear back from administration on. Friendship societies or uh more detailed breakdown on expenses for a potential trip or or things like that. Additional information you might require to help you make a decision later on.
Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you two, administration generally. Those are the least Nedon can handle this. Um, before. I set anything up um that will. Cause problems for administration. I would like to know whether. There is um. A generalized sense of what a last date of decision could be for a delegation. For this year, I I sense that the matter has come forward now because there is some urgency. To make decisions so that we could potentially be ready um for the fall. I am sensitive to the comments about other participation from community members. And I'm just wondering whether there might be an opportunity to provisionally. Commit to a delegation but subject to securing commitments from a sufficient number of. Community representatives. Um, and I I see that. Not necessarily to speak about whether or not we defer to another year, but. To put some context to this discussion, um it has been, as you said. Eleven years, I think, since. Jasper made a trip to Hakoni. Um, so two thousand and twelve, Hakoni was here in two thousand and fifteen, we typically invite them. Um, for Canada Day and that's, that's our big celebration and we're happy to have them and they invite us. For the tiny Oak Parade about the end of October, typically. Which is their celebration. We had hoped to go in two thousand and twenty-two because in response to councillor Hall's question or things. The agreement was that we would rotate every two years and we are way behind on that. Um, but two thousand and twenty-two marked the fiftieth anniversary of our relationship with Hakoni. Which is the oldest in the province and in fact creates the provincial um relationship with. Uh their counterpart in Japan, so there is, there is a bit of timeliness. Secondly, um my understanding is that Travel Alberta now has. Put Japan in its focus and Travel Alberta with David Goldstein's leading a mission with. DMOs from the province at about the end of April, so there is a resurgence in interest. At the tourism level, provincial tourism level in Japan. Um, right now, and it is consistent with WestJet's announcement that there's going to be a direct flight from Edmonton to Tokyo. So. If this is a driver of tourism at all, and I'm not saying that it is, but if it is, there are some other things with which we could be aligned. At this time, which brings me back to my first question. How rapidly? Does administration need an answer on whether or not? We think we might go this year or are going to defer, or could we? Hedge bets and say, well, we'll go if there's enough community interest um. To support a trip this year.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the Mayor Ireland. Um, the the reason for. When this request for decision came before you, i.e. today, is because um. We are looking at potentially three different programs for Hakoni for this year. So uh a conference that has already been approved as part of the budget, which is being hosted in May. Potentially a student exchange program, potentially a delegation to Hakoni in the fall. And all that work needs to be organized and coordinated on our end. So as we uh look at the year ahead and the workload and and the things we need to accomplish. So that was the main driver behind bringing this forward at this time. Um, directly to your question about what would it take for us to be able to determine more precisely a a deadline or a timeframe for making a decision? I think um in order to get there, we would need to uh get some items confirmed from our counterparts in Hakoni. So that uh depends on how quickly we can get that information from them. But also, I think the safest bet would be to uh start engaging in a preliminary fashion with a travel agent. And to determine from like from their perspective, what kind of timeline are we looking at to book flights and reserve hotels? And and at the same time, I assume we could get a a basic cost estimate of what it might uh entail for each participant. And then so a a motion directing administration to gather more information on a potential delegation to Hakoni in the fall. Would be the way to direct us to do that work and we could wa- walk away with that and bring back the information. I mean, we would have the timeline and the motion actually list and and get back to you. Once we confirm up that information.
Councillor Demota.
All right, well, um, maybe we could save that one for last if if there's a willingness uh from council. Um, to break these down, so um I do want to start with the student exchange one. If uh there's an appetite there and what I was going to propose as a motion is that committee direct administration to reevaluate. And pursue the high school student exchange program in two thousand and twenty-four and develop a recommendation for council consideration. I think that's pretty straightforward and we're not rushing into it. We have a recommendation saying that this year might not be a good year to do it and that'll give administration some time to help us make a better informed decision.
Okay, thank, thank you, councillor Demota, for putting that available. Uh, councillors. On its own, Ellen.
Councillor, could you repeat the middle part after the end of your motion?
Uh, develop recommendations for council consideration.
The whole thing.
Okay, uh, the committee direct administration to reevaluate and pursue the high school student exchange program. For two thousand and twenty-four and develop recommendations for councils' consideration. And the reason I I put reevaluate and pursue in there uh was because of some of the comments that director Nedon had. Uh, behind legality and uh representation or um unaccompanied minors and things like that. So there's a little bit of work to be done there and then, but also to continue pursuits. Um, having someone go over in two thousand and twenty-four. I was channeling my Andrew Richard, if there's one there.
Uh councillor Melnick and then uh.
Thank you, uh, I'll be. Timely here. I I would. Be in favor of delaying the student exchange until two thousand and twenty-four, giving the opportunity to better formulate. Criteria around it, while we do have some criteria on our website for the student exchange program. We haven't formalized timelines and perhaps for parents planning to send their child halfway around the world for three weeks. And then be ready to host a uh an individual for three weeks in their home. We um should probably better define what the expectations are and that certainly won't happen between now and this summer. So I'd be in favor of deferring this to two thousand and twenty-four.
Mayor.
Speaking to the motion, I. I believe that I support. The motion's intent, but. I'm concerned about the word pursue. So. My my hope would be to leave direction to administration to. Defer. The high school exchange. With the time being and to reevaluate, reevaluate the program and come back with recommendations for council consideration. Because if if as the motion. Was read. We invite a reevaluation, but nevertheless say pursue it, but. The intent is to make sure something happens. In two thousand and twenty-four, but based on the recommendation, maybe that's not the way to go, at least not through us, so. I leave that with you, it's it's a difficult action.
Well, um, in the spirit of consensus building, um, I said if I was going to make a motion, this is how it would sound. So um I didn't uh put it forward just yet, so I and and so I would take that as. Uh, a pre-friendly amendment as uh amendment to consider it. So should uh it sound more like uh that committee direct administration to reevaluate. The high school student exchange program. And develop recommendations for council consideration. So then we're not really attaching a date for two thousand and twenty-four and we're not pursuing anything, we're reevaluating it. Keeping it clear, um, your deputy mayor Wilson, I think. CAO can like to contribute.
Good to hear, also, if councillor, I I think that that's that's how Paul maybe just would be verify what timeframe. You know, maybe towards the end of that, you can say for two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. So I I think really that the the key thing here is, are we planning a student exchange in two thousand and twenty-three or not? And I understand that the intention of that motion is, I I believe the intention of that motion is say, no, not in two thousand and twenty-three. And so I think just by saying. You know, the essence being administration reevaluate, bring forward recommendations for future years, as in like, we're not doing it this year. We need some advice and we would not consider anything before two thousand and twenty-four and before receiving that advice. So I think of that that motion that you have there just for two thousand and twenty-four and beyond, being at the very end would give it a very good. We're not pursuing it in this year, we're not trying to work with any community partners, anybody else on the exchange. And would also allow us to give uh Kona um that clarity, because they are, I think, very interested. Um, they are asking when we're going to start advertising for students and so being able to say, you know, we've been asked to. You know, reexamine this program and bring forward recommendations and we don't expect that we'll have anything, you know, we won't be having exchanges this year. Um, and we wouldn't expect to be having it in four thousand and twenty-four, we'll give them clarity they need.
Okay, so. Through all that work, um, I move that committee direct administration. To reevaluate the high school student exchange program and develop recommendations. For council consideration, semicolon. For the year two thousand and twenty-four and beyond.
Thank you for that. Everybody understands the question, would anyone like to speak to it? Call the question, all in favor? They're not opposed, that motion carries. Okay, councillors, uh, that was one, um. Anything further? Councillor Demota.
Um. Again, um, we heard some information about the potential of having some an external. Uh, entity, uh, maybe do some work on that, but regardless, I think it might be. Um, a good approach to uh consider administration driving in terms of reference. For the hospitality and twin communities committee. Um. Or something of that nature, but I I think that we need to to make some progress. Um, to work on what we're doing right now, to have some parameters and so. Work on what we're doing right now, to have some parameters and some proper uh. Direction and. A stable platform that works right. So I, I'd be, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, I'd be willing to, to put a, a motion forward. Uh, as is from the recommendation that uh, committee direct administration to draft terms of reference. For the hospitality and twin commu- communities committee.
That's on the table?
I'm willing to do that if there's any other. Speaking or somebody wants to make a better motion than that.
Counselor Waxer, you were just about to put your.
I have written a completely different motion, so I didn't know if you wanted. If we have to deal with this one first.
Counselor Demoto, is your motion on the table?
Nope.
It's not. Uh, Counselor Waxer, go ahead.
That committee direct administration to explore alternate delivery models. For managing the Hakoni twinning relationship. And provide a recommendation to, for the future.
Okay, yeah, thank you, uh, Counselor Demoto.
If that's the motion, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, uh, amendment and uh. Change out the, the word Hakoni for sister city.
In an effort to maintain our allegiance to. Gender neutral terminology, might I suggest to your friend, we amend the twin municipalities.
Absolutely. That's what I meant.
I accept that friendly uh, amendment. I was afraid you were going to say sibling.
Right. And I, I think if you would, Counselor Waxer, with that friendly amendment, could you agree with it? Because I think Ms. Akorn would benefit from. A bit more clarity in the motion that's going to be presented.
That committee direct administration to explore alternate delivery models. For managing the. And those probably twin municipalities relationship and provide a recommendation for the future.
Thank you for that. Uh, if anybody understands the question. I'll call the question all in favor. They're not opposed, I'm motion curious. Counselor Demoto.
Well, I, I really appreciate uh, the structure of that. Uh, motion and that was the spirit uh, that I wanted to carry that. Also, thank you.
Yes, I still have one more item to uh, take care of. Any, any counselors want to jump on that one? Counselor Demoto.
Well, um. I would uh, recommend, I would like to recommend that uh. Council defer a delegation to Hakoni for a future year if I was going to put forward a motion. Just because I, I feel that we don't have all the information in front of us and I think that we could establish a better. Uh, contingency uh, for twenty twenty four. So I'm willing to move that forward if uh. I know that I just, I don't want it to get defeated. And not have the opportunity. So that's why I'm kind of stepping it up for. The census building here because I have a group of residents in council whether they would be in. Favor of that and rather have some sort of uh. Inclusive participation.
I'm not sure we need to defer it yet at this point. I think uh, there is some. Preliminary work that could be done now and. We could look, see, can, is it viable to make twenty twenty three? You know, we may get the answer saying, you know what, I think we need, we do need another uh, year to, to make it happen. So I don't think it needs to be deferred yet at this point. I. Could, could happen in the future, but. Maybe we just start moving forward with the. The work that needs to be done to, to plan and, and see where it goes from there. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Given the information that um. In our discussions that has come out that any delegation that would go would be in the fall. And we did talk about finding out what, uh, it would be good to find out if Hakoni. Could accept a delegation. I think we spoke about what size of delegation. And it would give us a chance to pull together some costs. And then maybe go out into the community to see who would like to attend, who would like to join. Um, but I think we have some steps that go through here. I don't, I don't think we need to defer it. Um. I think we need to move it along. Um, and you know, once we know that Hakoni's, if they've been saying, yes, we'd like you to come. Let us know how many, give us some approximate dates and then let us see what we can do to pull a delegation together. Read the intention of whatever most of them. And I think that'll put us in good faith with Hakoni. Um, it would give, I hope, clear direction to administration as to. The next few steps. And then we get to a decision, decision point um, as to are, are we a go or no go.
Thank you, uh.
Counselor Demoto, so uh. Counselor Melnick, are you going to propose that maybe we direct administration to come back to council with more information? In some, to some degree?
I was just responding to your suggestion that there wasn't enough discussion yet and I was just adding my discussion.
Me too. I just realized we have another matter on the.
Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, yeah, uh, so although it may not be uh, contained in the report, you know, administration does have the details that council and all of us talked about. I think we have preliminary dates from Koning. I think we have a general sense that, yeah, well, there may be some limitations if we can. Uh, identify a delegation that we happy to receive it. Uh, we, we have the option if council decides that they want to send a formal delegation that we can open that up to whatever extent. Kony certain advised us they can accept people, you know, open that up and, and work with the community if anybody wants to go. Really, the question is. Is the money first dedicated to the position? Is council sending an official delegation in twenty twenty three or not? Uh, the recommendation here is actually that council approved the delegation in twenty twenty three. And it becomes about the apportionment of the monies if we're going to send in the official delegations, it has that ten thousand dollars. Um, and as it goes to one position, is it uh, divided among the seven members of the council? It's divided some other way. And so, so really is um. Administration is ready to activate a delegation in twenty twenty three if you tell us to do so. If you tell us that you're not ready to do that because there's not enough information, it'd be helpful if you define what information you would like to see before making that decision. So, so uh, you know, further information uh, in motion for us to bring forward further information before you decide. Totally uh, totally fair. Uh, it would be helpful to administration if you, if, if there's other information that you don't see in this report. Um, please identify what it is so that we can make sure that you're correct as Director Nons said, it's best. Because, you know, each two week cycle of committees and research and whatever reduces the amount of time that there is to do things like book flights and. So, um, really the essential question is twenty twenty three or not? And if so, twenty twenty three uh, apportionment of ten thousand dollars, which that is. Certainly a decision that could be apportioned to the monies um, could be decided later on. Uh, I think the real essential thing is, um, should we set our staff to making those arrangements uh, or not for this show?
Counselor Keller.
I'm just wondering, um, Mayor Ireland mentioned that travel Alberta is um. Working with um. The Costco in Japan and what shows and stuff, you know. Wondering if in twenty twenty three, there is a delegation going to Japan that we made Hakoni part of that delegation. May not necessarily be the normal time of year we went, but maybe there's an opportunity there to explore that.
In anticipation. I'm sorry. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um, through you to Counselor Keller. Um, in anticipation of this discussion today, I. Saw out um, tourism jobs for yesterday to get this additional information, but my under, my understanding, which is. Not fully informed is that. The travel bird delegation is restricted to representatives of DMOS at this time. And. Is targeted, I think about the end of April. Uh, and whether it includes Hakoni or it could be. Reconfigured to include Hakoni. The importance of, of that visit is that it underscores the importance of Japan um, as a tourism. Market for ever. Uh, which of course impacts our, our own local tourism industry, but. Yeah, I, I don't know enough yet to know whether we could avail ourselves of that. I presume that locally represented by the DMO will. Will probably attend. Um. And maybe we could figure that, but I don't know.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. My question is to, I'm not sure, I guess, who went last time. How long? Is, is it a two week trip or typically how long you decide the delegation for?
If I may.
You may.
My recollection is seven or eight days towards the. The usual length of. Of state or travel landscape.
Man. And she's happy there. Um, my question, I guess, would be to Counselor Demoto. I'm just. If you can just explain again your hesitation or what, like the reasons you might want to push it. Another year, do you think that we're not ready? Administration not ready? Optics?
If I may, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson.
Hey, yes, please.
Um. Well, thanks for that question and, and I was trying to be as clear as possible and I apologize if I'm not. I, I just, I, I don't think that. Looking at the documents that we have before us in the agenda, say, everything is well detailed on. You know, what things could cause and how much this is going to be and. I, I'd like to have a plan and right now we don't really have a plan. We, our plan is that we have ten thousand dollars. And maybe some counselors can go. We don't know what the trips are going to be and that might take some time. Uh, there's hotel costs, there's all these travel arrangements that can be made. And I know that going into the summertime. Administration is already tasked with so many things that they need to deal with that are a higher priority. Now, when you look at. What we have in front of us, what we want to do and, and at budget time, when we looked at that entire colored chart. Uh, which I think there's a reference in here not to consider that, but at the same time, when we're looking at our strategic priorities. Um, although relationships are. One of our priorities, when it fits into everything else that we're doing and including administration time. You know, I'd like to advance things, but it's, it's one of those things that I think that we should put more preparation to. And have more of a concise idea of what's going on. And then at budget time. Get some real numbers and then, you know, the, the community can really have a feeling of. What and why we're doing this. So uh, to me, I think there, we're still kind of piecing me mailing the information together, even though we can get it together. Um. In due time to maybe make uh, create a contingency or a delegation to go down. Um, I'm just. I'd want to go, but I don't know if we're going to be scrambling and then, you know, doing a bunch of other work off the side of people's desk. Uh, that could have a better focus for twenty twenty four.
I didn't want it that short. Okay, counselors, but uh, we do need a motion to get this one off the agenda. So. Anybody would like to put something forward that would be excellent, or we can defer, but uh. Yeah.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm, I'm not sure if that's helpful, but the, I think if I had to provide counsel alternatives. I think Mr. Given sort of led you in that direction already, but I think the three options before council for today are um. That committee recommend council approve a delegation in twenty twenty three and then whether or not you want to deal with the. Allocation of funding, as Mr. Given said, that could be dealt with at a later time. Or um, option two, that committee direct administration to do further research to determine. The timeline, the cost and the delegation size or the approximate cost of the delegation size. And return to a committee of the whole with that information and then council could make a, a decision after that. So you would be directing some administrative work preliminary, but not indicating to us to. Start planning for a delegation. Or the alternative uh, being the one that's listed in the report that uh, committee recommend council defer a delegation to Hakoni to a different year. So. Approve, send us to get more info or defer.
Counselor Demoto. Well, I'd like to, to move on, on uh, that second recommendation that you made, but I don't see that in front of me. So. Um. Do you have that worded somewhere or did that just come off the? Okay, I don't, but I'd like to use those words. So, and I couldn't write it down fast enough. So uh, could you? Uh, repeat the recommendation, uh, number two that you made for coming back with more information?
Thank you, Counselor Demoto. I will attempt.
I just, I tried, I really did.
Um, that committee direct administration. To. Um.
Return.
Return, return to committee of the whole with additional information on. Timeline, approximate cost and delegation size. For a delegation to Hakoni in the fall of twenty twenty three. As, as Mr. Given, CEO Given indicated, these are, I mean, those are the parameters I thought I heard in, in the discussion. Council might wish to. Ask us for different information, but also I think these are high level enough estimates that we could provide and. Hopefully, and we would try to return it as, as quickly as we can. We, we're dependent on. Information for, from third parties here, but we could attempt to figure that out.
Yeah. Counselor Demoto. Okay, so I have a motion here that uh, any direct administration to return to uh, future committee of all with additional. Information on timelines, us participation and participation size, size for a delegation to Hakoni in twenty twenty three.
Thank you for that, Counselor Demoto. Anybody uh, comments, questions about that motion, Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I think what that'll give us is an opportunity to then have a placement cost for the community. Who would like to participate. In the delegation um, as well, which will help move this along tremendously because if we are going to invite some of our other. Business leaders, I E. folks who've had relationships with. The Hakoni before, um, I think it's fair that we say this is the dates that we're going on. Uh, give or take, that's when they're anticipating us. Um, your cost for a hotel that you'll bear, cost of hotel flight and so on. Will be in this range of X thousands of dollars. And then that way they can make an informed decision and make a commitment and we'll get to our numbers for, for the delegation.
Great, thanks for that, Counselor Melnick. Anyone else? I'll call the question, all in favor. They're not opposed, I'm motion curious. Okay, uh, moving on to agenda item seven point six institutional use of private space. This is verbal, uh, from Counselor Demoto.
Thank you very much. And uh, first of all, through you, uh, Deputy Mayor, what to thank uh. Director Greathead for being here today. I think the main and only reason Director Greathead is here is because of this agenda item and. Had I been a little bit more astute, I might have moved this or requested to move this further up the agenda. So I appreciate your patience. And hopefully some of the discussions here helps you to date regardless. Um, so moving forward on that, um, we had some discussion recently, um, maybe not directly at the council table, but. Directly at the council table, but, um. Garbage collection and community and recycling and where those bins are located. And because we've recently taken on the task of, uh, looking at equity through utilities, I know that, um, you know. Eventually, we may look at, uh, curbside pickup for garbage in the community and that might alleviate some of the. The issues out there, but while we're there. Um, you know, I wanted to explore to see how many of our collection bins are on private property. And what type of agreements that we have, uh, with having, um, our municipal equipment. Um, or infrastructure. On those properties. So I guess, uh, through you Deputy Mayor Wilson to, uh, administration and potentially. Um, the director given their director great.
Uh, good morning, council and Deputy Mayor, um. If I may speak to, uh, Councilor Mo's, uh, questions, I I'm kind of, uh. Feel prepared for this morning. I just noticed this on the agenda yesterday, um, but we do have a mix of, um, garbage cans that are. Located on private residences as well as. Um, on public property. Um, I'm not sure we did the survey last year and just did an inventory of that. Um, unfortunately, uh, our utilities manager or sorry operations manager, uh, La Rumbolda. He's off in Mexico right now, so I was not able to access that. His data, uh, I believe right now we have seven, uh, garbage cans that are located on private property. Um, I believe that we have a mix of. Um, ownership statuses, uh, with those garbage cans that, um. Is also complex and and difficult for us to manage. Um, I believe it's, uh. We purchased some garbage cans from some private, uh, private businesses as well, um, and then we've also. Uh, supported some private businesses by, um, helping them get their. Um, bins refurbished at our offer at our rate, uh, that we pay as municipality. So we've we've worked, um, with it, but right now there's no hard fast rule that we're following. Um, unfortunately, that's not controlled by us with the garbage is, um, or. Whether there's a need for garbage placement, um, that's handled outside of, uh, the municipality. So we are left with a very, um. I guess scattered approach to how we, uh, handle solid waste and where we place these solid waste bins. I know that we at operations have been endeavoring to make sure that we have consistent coverage, so, uh, residents, you know, have. Yeah, reasonable amount of distance to access a bin on their sites, uh, or what about from the property. Uh, but I I could give back to you at a future committee of the whole with that information. I'm just still prepared for today.
Thank you very much and I'm sorry and I I really didn't want to put anybody on the spot. Um, and the reason I was going through this is, um, I wanted to what. You know, our strategic priorities to test with this just because. Um, we started off with, uh, water and sewer utility rates and with connection fees and all that in order. To establish an equitable distribution in the community and. Um, you know, I was thinking, well, if we're going to do that and we're actually using some of our our own property. Uh, on private leaseholds regardless, like. Potentially, there could be some type of compensation or agreement that's established there and I don't think that it's within best practice to. To continue doing what we're doing and just kind of having, uh, kind of a loose arrangement that way. So and the reason and the filters that I put that through, um, you know, it wasn't, I'm not trying to stretch it out here by any means because. You know, I wanted to start with organizational excellence and and if we move down to bullet point number three there, it says. Correct proactively plan and invest in the maintenance and management of our natural assets and build infrastructure. Then the next one is ensure residents receive quality service that provides strong value for their dollar. Um, and then I believe if we've got, um, you know, our our infrastructure on private property, then we need to kind of. Um, review that and then pursue alternative revenue sources and equitable distribution of costs also fits into that. And then, uh, lastly, within the environmental, uh, lens, um. You know, we demonstrate the care of our environment. We value the opportunities and responsibilities arising from. Our location inside the national park and heritage site. Um, that includes what, uh, Director, uh, Greathead just said and and you know. Some of these things are are not really in our control and we need to kind of have a conversation about that, so I think, uh. Going forward, as I was just going to ask that to direct administration to return to a future committee of the whole. With, uh, information identifying equitable solutions for, uh, collection bins, uh. Located on private property. So that's kind of where I was going to go. So in the spirit of what I've been kind of throwing out there today, I'd like to hear from the rest of council to see if there's a desire to to approach. This or happen as a discussion topic.
Thank you, uh, counselors and comments. Nothing at this point, it seems.
Does everybody understand my intent? That's the question. Okay. All right, well, then I'll officially move that forward then and, um. I I moved that committee direct administration to return to a future committee of all with information identifying some equitable solution. For our collection bins located on private property. Solid waste collection bins, yes. But there's some recycling wants to, right? So I just I just have collection bits.
Okay, understand. Um, counselors. Not being any questions. So you're suggesting, um. Equitable solution meeting.
Oh, that's a big question. Sorry, I didn't detail that. Um, you know, we have these arrangements with Parks Canada where we have. Payments of the taxes, um, you know, there could be, uh, some incentives, uh, you know, with our arrangements to. Say this area that we take, uh, on your property constitutes X amount of square footage and. That savings to you, you know, there there should be some sort of, um, reciprocation on us. Technically, not technically, but technically squatting rights on someone's property, right? For the use of municipal services, so I think that. Moving forward in that again, using the term in the spirit of all the things that we've been doing as far as utilities go. Uh, continue through that process, um, in demonstrating our commitment to organizational excellence.
Thank you. Counselors, questions? Comments?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Counselor Demota. Could you again just read? Or restate your motion?
Sure, absolutely.
Or repeat rather than.
That's fine. Um, the committee direct administration to return to a future committee. Of the whole with information identifying equitable solutions for collections been for collection bins located on private property. Private leaseholds. I I think the intention's there, so.
It is, I think, um. But I wonder whether. It could be more broadly stated. I'd be interested. If we are going to task administration with coming back, looking at. Collection bins for. Solid waste and recycling. I would be more interested in hearing whether there are. Alternatives to bins on private land. Rather than. An equitable dealing with bins on private land, so it seems to me that. With advances in technology, we should be in a position where we could seriously look at curbside pickup. There are sufficient, um. Containers out there now that are strong enough to withstand an attack from a poor there. Um, which we don't have. So if we. And I agree that that. Collection bins on private. Property can be an issue and. They become more of an issue. But it wouldn't be an issue if we had curbside collecting. Recyclables and solid waste as other communities do and. Would that be an option? So if if we're in a task administration. Um, should we broaden it so that they're not tasked with just looking at. Doing better what we're already doing, but changing what we're doing and how we do it. So I believe that it's your motion, um, it could be narrower or more broadly stated. I'd like to hear from Mr. Greathead potentially about whether, um, that is just a, uh. A radical, we would be sending him down with with no hope of resolution, uh, but I I would be interested in how we. How we look at collection of waste because we could tie so many things to it, including. Um, user fee and we've heard that over the years that our garbage fees are inadequate in themselves because we can't measure anybody's output. But with curbside collection, a bunch of those issues get solved for you.
Well, and I'm sure that there are, oh, sorry if I may. I'm sure that there's a lot of solutions out there and I'm glad because I just I wanted to spark some debate on this. And I'm sorry that it's so late in the day already and I know we want to go to lunch and stuff like that, so, um. You know, I I I think that's a great approach. I know that there's going to be a big budgetary consideration and. To move that forward again with all the stuff that administration's tasked with right now and. Things like to prepare something like that for budget time because that would take a long time and then even. You know, getting a study together, whether it's even feasible, because regardless of bins are, um. Polar bear proof or not, does that take away from the attractive that they might cause, um, for, um. Wildlife to come into the community. Uh, because if we have, you know. Talking to some people in other communities, if you have that all spread out, that might attract. Bear activity in in Jasper having curbside pickup, so we're not sure if we have all those solutions and I see where the mayor is going and. We need to review all that. But in the meantime, um, I think we could put together a more comprehensive. Um. Motion and direct administration to do that, um, I'm not sure if I'm ready to do that, but you can also, if you want to. Put another motion forward to encapsulate that. So mine is just kind of address what we have and what we're doing right now before we even get to that step because I think in, um. To to go along the same. Method of how we've been approaching utilities, I think this is just like a necessary step until we get to a bigger plan.
Okay, Counselor Melna?
Two things, uh, Deputy Mayor, um, is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is, okay.
Um. Then I guess we, just as a point of order, should probably, um. We can't make another motion to extend for four hours, can we? Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, well. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Um. I'll speak to the motion and just. Uh, I I think the motion has merits. But needs to be a little bit more specific before I support it. It sounds like we're looking at alternate ways of keeping. Uh, collecting garbage. Or have to look at how that's going to affect our residents who don't have. A garage to put a bear proof bin in or or appropriate bin, who don't have a back alley, who live in apartments. Um. The whole host of other things around this particular motion. I don't disagree with looking at another way of doing it. But I'd like to see. Um, just a little bit more clarity as to to what we're all doing. I mean, we talked about bins on private property. And now we've potentially gone to a point of. Um, how we're going to affect people's, uh, the way they live. And work and whether they have space to to accommodate this. So I'm 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 not sure the motion, the way it's worded, that I'd be able to, um. To support it.
Basically, all I'm saying is Ralph, I let you park your truck in my parking spot and I haven't been, we just have a friendly handshake, but. Um, there should be some value to me that you park my truck in there and what's that worth? So, you know, that's. Um, I'm not talking about going and. Looking at bear proof bins. I thought it was being pretty straightforward in my motion. If it's that hard of a task, I can withdraw. All I'm saying is that, uh, we're just directing administration to come back. Uh, with information identifying equitable solutions for collection bins already located on private property. And then, you know, that might be a potential that in the scenario where we had something out on the street. Um, that somebody didn't like in front of their house, we needed to find an alternate solution and then if somebody's willing. To do that, then they know that they might receive some compensation for having it on their property, then there might be an incentive to say, yeah, you can put it on my. Driveway or whatever it is. But right now we don't have any agreements for all that and that's not in the spirit of what we've been doing for utilities and. Um, but if somebody has a better, uh, motion, then I'm I'm willing to withdraw mine.
Counselor Melna?
So we're strictly looking at. Bins. We're strictly looking at bins currently on. Private property, whether they be residential or commercial. All right.
Motion's on the table? Uh, I think, uh, I think you've repeated a couple of those. Do you understand that motion? Mayor Allen.
I appreciate the motion. I think I understand it. I wonder what it means for. Administration, is there in. Your mind, Councilor Demota, is the mover of the motion. An equitable solution possible other than. A fee for the service. You, I I don't know what administration is expected. Look at in terms of. Um. Equitable solutions other than. Fair market compensation. Is is that what we're asking them to do? What's a fair price for the use of that land?
Sure.
Well, I.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, is there a different solution that they could be looking for? Have you? Have you got something in mind that might be different than? The cost that. We pay or the municipality might pay to somebody for the use of their land, so that we can run. Uh, solid waste and recycling collection.
Yes, but I don't have, uh, the experience or expertise in another solution, so. Uh, there could be some other alternative. Ways that other communities have done it or people that have experience in in other communities and I'm not sure if I just. And I didn't really want this to be a huge issue and I did want to spark some, uh. Consideration to, you know, our future practice, but I don't think we're at this the the spot right now where. We should be or can be approaching that administratively and, um, you know, considering future budgets and things like that. I just. If that's something that, you know, we as council want to, um, approach for the next budget cycle or for twenty twenty five or even for the. TM for the next council, whether that on on how to practice that. Uh, as a whole, and that that's something that should be considered. I don't think that, you know, that if we move in that direction, that's going to, that's going to have a huge. Budgetary application. I'm not sure if we're ready for that yet.
Straight, Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I should have asked this during before debate, but the Director Greathead, you said there were seven. Bins on private. Property, was that, is that correct? Or do you even see a number?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson to, uh, Counselor Hall, um, I'm recalling seven, uh, right now. It may be more, maybe less. Um, I would like to verify that with, uh, Mr. Fielder when he gets back. We have gone into enough a lot of work, um. On to this. Just even making sure that we have placement. You know, adequately throughout the town. So there's an awful lot of work that we've done that we would be able to bring to council. For your discussion and consideration on that. Just want to, like, we have looked at different options and. And again, use the word looking into the rabbit hole and this can become quite a large endeavor. Just anecdotally, the consideration of trying to change on how we deliver our service for solid waste. And maybe, you know, it it can be very, very expensive just to change the stream and then we have an awful lot of inventory. That are specifically designed components to work together like our hydraulic garbage cans go with our haul trucks. Right? So we are kind of. At this point, kind of, it's embedded into, you know, just our structure and and. Yeah, I guess we're married to those at this point. It would be a significant change to to look at different options and it wouldn't be a cheap option, just. Just to advise council.
Just to follow up, those seven are how many you think are already, is it a mix of residential and commercial? Is it mostly residential, but mostly commercial? The properties that these bins sit on?
Mostly it's in the residential areas in the in the alleyways. They, those would be the affected bins, the commercial properties would be the hotels and then they're required to, you know. Have their own. You know, spacing for that. So some of the larger properties, they're required to have it, but there's been a inconsistent approach. Throughout the years on where the bins have been placed and required to be placed. So that's that's part of the problem that we face.
That's what you want. And if I just made for for clarification, I am not trying to drill any paths to rabbit holes or anything like that. I'm just, I'm. Just talking about fair fairness and equity here and I think that if we're going to. Look at a a bigger scope, that we would need to have a study, an impact study on what that means to the municipality and that goes to like. How many vehicles we need, how many staff we need to to go and how much it's going to cost to maintain that throughout the year. And then, you know, that, so I think we're not there yet. So mine is just trying to keep it as simple and basic as possible for now. Understanding how many bins are actually out there, how many are on private leaseholds and, you know. Is there, is what we're doing fine for the time being? And then do we have appropriate? Agreements with those people with those leaseholders that what we're doing is good practice.
Yeah, it sounds like it's pretty straightforward request and I think once Mr. Maluk is back, he'll get some information. It doesn't. Sure, it doesn't have to be very built out at this point, but to return back to us and with some information regarding your topic, yeah. I'll call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed. Question carries. Great, thank you for that, Councilor Moda. Oh, yes, Councilor Melnick has a motion put forward.
I didn't hope, I was hoping not to have to do this quickly. Committee, the whole extend, I move that the committee, the whole extend the February fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting beyond four hours.
What do you understand the question? All in favor? They're not opposed. Motion carries. We're moving on to the motion action list. We're pretty close, guys. Mr. Given.
Thanks very much, Council. I'll just suggest two changes. You'll see that we haven't annotated this with changes ahead of time. This is as it was at the last meeting and so. You'll see that today we dealt with community conversations policy A zero zero five. And then previously we dealt with the our simple musical right. And so the administration's recommendation would be that both of those could be struck from this list. And then we still do have a meeting in February. I don't expect that you'll see all of those items that are listed as a February date. But we can advise you on which ones, you know, we would be forwarding at that next. Those are the only two changes I recommend right now is the removal of those two items.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselors, do we have a motion? You guys, your council hall. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just before we get to the motion, just one observation. Mostly inconsequential, but it it might. Alert us as councils to. Our motions in the future. So the very last item on the. Motion action list relates to the Jasper Senior Society request. And I see that that motion said. The administration was asked for a report at the next committee of the whole meeting, which is this meeting. And we'll get that at the next one after this. So it's out here. That was the next one, I suppose, but. And any fairness, I appreciate that administration can always get it done. At that that speed, but we did have a motion that said next and. It could have just said at a future meeting so that administration is not put in that position. Do not change it still there for February of twenty twenty three. So we'll hear next year, pardon me, next, next meeting. About that, I raised it only because I. Assured the members that the seniors community. Conversation that would be on our next agenda and it's not.
Okay, thank you.
And it also signifies that you read every single word from the beginning and then chatted to the very, very end, so.
Well, wait, that word is five words from the end.
If that's where you stopped, okay, that's good. Just because we extended the time doesn't mean we got to use it all. Councilor Hall.
I move that committee approved. We updated motion action list.
Now amended? Or as?
As presented, as presented.
All in favor? You're not opposed. Motion carries. Counselor updates or counselor upcoming meetings, boards, boards and committees. Councilor Melnick.
In keeping with the spirit of meeting Tuesdays. Today I'll be attending the Jasper Helen Historical Society Board Meeting this evening. More morning, the Arts and Culture Community Conversations. And on Thursday, I actually have a community futures lending course that was offered by Community Futures. So I'll be spending some time improving my knowledge to be able to participate on that committee more effectively.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else, Councilors, Councilor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I attended two meetings last week, a community conversation last Wednesday. It was early childhood and school age. And again, I'm always just blown away by how amazing that department is and all the programming and and still. People are experiencing food security issues. They, community services have been getting grants to help residents pay rent arrears and utilities. That's kind of what things are. Now I think a few people have settled into. Spooning or seeing all the all the food options and now people are just getting behind on bills, which I think the test as well. As far as the teens toward was very happy to report that teens are just too busy now to be bored. There's a lot happening and they seem to be really embracing all the. Mr. Given, you're doing like a thing. Yeah, I know they are. They're quite busy. There's a lot of activity. There's a lot of programming that's just in that. In play, which is awesome. School age kids are experiencing some anxiety, I think, struggling to study, learn. I think COVID really had a bit of effect on that. I also took the library board meeting that evening and so again, just a testament to the amazing people that we have working within the the town. Holly upstairs saw a need. She saw kids coming on Tuesdays and created a program called choose tweens on Tuesdays and she's seeing up to twenty plus. Tweens, it's kind of an age nine to twelve coming on Tuesdays and it's a real kid led program, which is awesome. The twenty second, I believe, sorry, that yeah, every twenty second next week is pink shirt day. So I'll remind you guys, I'll wear pink shirts next Wednesday. That's for me.
Thank you, Mayor Allen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Item ninety point one on the agenda refers to council appointments to boards and committees. Because of the motion passed earlier today, well, it won't be perfected until our next council meeting, but. We will eliminate. Three appointments that counselors have with the change to community conversations that also impacts alternate appointments. And so. The existing list of appointments is going to suffer some inequities. I'm quite prepared to do some work and come back at a future meeting. I won't say the next meeting. To to try and bring balance back to this little piece of our universe if counselors are interested. Otherwise, we are in a position where. Three people lose appointments and three people lose alternate appointments because of the changes that we've made and that's going to change the balance. Is counselor, is council interested in me working to readjust appointments? To try and bring balance back and I I haven't looked specifically to see how out of balance we now are, but. It is one of. The considerations when we make appointments at the organizational meeting to try and. So this changes things. Is council interested in in having? A reevaluation of all appointments to try and bring some balance back or are we prepared to just go on for the balance of the year with? Those. Three direct appointments and three alternate appointments just disappearing.
Counselors, I'm happy with my appointments. I'm not sure if I'm in more or less. I'm not sure where I stand, but I'm happy, but if. Councilor Melnick? Happy? Happy, happy, so just keep operating. As is until. Oh, that's right.
Just wanted to point that if there are, if anyone wanted something off of their plate that I'm, that my. Bill is dwindling, I think with. The community conversation, potential changes to the twinning. Relationship as well as the communities in bloom that may be three. Off of my plate out of five. So I I'm available if people need someone to pull in.
Okay, thank you for that. Good, any more comments? Any more upcoming meetings for counselors? I'll just report that what's not an upcoming meeting. I spent the better part of last week. On training for the assessment review board and successfully passed, so I could now serve on the lards and carbs. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Given to direct me toward what, who to contact for those boards. Samuel, Doc, well done. Off the record, moving forward. To upcoming events, we have Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce General Meeting eight thirty AM Wednesday, February fifteenth, and that's Zoom. Coldest night of the year fundraiser and family walk is February twenty fifth. Talk to, this is Waxer here. Tourism Industry of Alberta Conference is February twenty seventh and twenty eighth, Edmonton. Anything more to add? Councilor Hall.
Thank you. Just again, a reminder that next Wednesday, twenty second is pink shirt day. So that's Thursday. No, that's Wednesday. That evening, there is a community engagement session at the Jasper Junior Senior High School with the Grandell Head Health School Division Board. I want to encourage council to roll if you hear people talking in the community. Does that be a really good place to raise focus on law down this table and a lot of conversations about in town bus for students? That's from six to eight. So again, the G Y P S D board will be there and I just want to make sure a lot of people are able to go to that. Tuesday night, February twenty first is the Tales from Jasper storytellers. It's a fundraiser at the downstream bar. For friends of Jasper Childcare and that's a week from today. And again, I think I said this last week, if you get your tickets, because you might hear some really great stories potentially from counselor. Should be good. And that's all I have.
Councilor Demora.
Well, I'm not sure if all the counselors have signed up for coldest night of the year. And if you haven't, please do so. And if you're not going to participate, at least, you know, make the effort to support the counselors and have so that we can. You know, achieve Council Waxer's goal of a thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty low hanging one. I I think we should. Try to, you know, at least branch out a little bit, get some more support with the committee.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. It's not on the list, but just a quick reminder for. Counselors, there's a rather impactful day coming up on Thursday. Just be reminded of that.
Nice.
Councilor Melnick.
Sorry, and here's one other thing. I believe next Wednesday, the twenty second, Netma will be at the downstream. As well, which isn't on the list.
Thank you for that. Anything further? And then we should do a term. Councilor Hall, all in favor? And you're not opposed. We're adjourned at. One fifty.